All right. Well, to all, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
I politically believe in the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. There. With that, I will call the Damascotta Select Board meeting to order November sixth. We have the whole board here tonight. Andy's down on the corner and we've got some folks in the audience tonight. So that's even more exciting. Yeah, we can get started, folks, with, Andy, is there any additions or changes before I get started?
Not that I remember.
Nothing in actions, anything like that? So you sneak them in later. All right, perfect. All right, folks, we do have some minutes to consider. We all had a chance to look them over. Are there any additions, changes, notations?
I'm going to motion to approve October second and October seventeenth minutes as written.
There. All right. Tom made a motion. Andrea, you seconded. Okay. Any discussion on those? All those in favor? Good. All right. We'll move on to our financials. So everybody has a chance to look over the financial reports. Any questions, comments before we?
I guess just the quicker one. So how many more after this one?
Like, not certain. And there's a certain dollar amount for the contract price.
And it's fixed, right?
Right. Change orders. Yeah. So I think there's this one that gets us through the October work. And there's some field changes that we're under review. In the next pay period, pay request probably for November, but then they'll likely won't. I'm guessing there'll just be one more in the spring. So probably two more.
So I see those big ones come through.
It's hard not to notice them.
I'm making a motion to approve payroll warrant nineteen.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Second. Dan seconds. All right. In discussion? Those in favor? All right.
And I'll do accounts bill board number twenty.
All right. Thank you, Josh. What's that one? Tom took that one. All right. Any discussion on that? Of those in favor? Okay. Passes unanimous, unanimous? All right. And we'll move out. So citizen comments. We get a nice letter from Healthy Kids. We acknowledge. Thank you for the twenty-two hundred dollar donation there. So I always do. Yeah, I know they always put the money to good, to good use anyway. So good to know. And all right. And I think we might have somebody here that wants to. You there? Come on up. Come on up. We could see our damascotta river report.
It's like the yearly, yearly trip in here.
You don't mind just your name into.
Yes, of course. So my name is Heather Leslie. I'm at four new, four Pleasant Street in Newcastle, and I serve on the Joint Shellfish Committee. So I'm here this evening to talk about a collaboration that the committee has with the University of Maine Darling Marine Center, our community science program. And also in my role at the Darling Center, I wanted to just raise a couple of issues that I thought might be of interest to the board. So first of all, the community science program has been quite productive this year. We've done both some data collection related to the ecology of the upper river, related to the resources that the Shellfish Committee is responsible for. We surveyed baby oysters for the second year. And we've also done some surveys of adult oysters. And in both cases, we haven't, we haven't found very many babies this year, which is interesting. And we're sort of, we're building up a data set that we are not yet ready to share, but hopefully we'll be able to bring to the board and several years in particular. And what we've seen that we've collected through this program, but also in talking with harvesters over the last several years, is there was a bit of a blip, a high point of wild oysters, and then a decline that corresponded to early COVID years. And now we are seeing more wild oysters on the shore. And one of the things we've been trying to do is more comprehensively survey those so we can again get a sense of whether the relationship that people think is going on, that the farms are providing the wild oysters, whether that's in fact the case. And if it is, are those oysters that are wild on the shore now reproducing? Are they becoming self-sustaining populations? Which again is become, become an important recreational and commercial resource. So we don't have definitive answers to any of those questions yet. That's the way science goes slowly. But yeah, but we did have a team of students working with us this summer. Some who had come from as far away as Michigan. So this is a project that has drawn interest from, from many different quarters. And before we did that ecology work, we did a series of focus groups. And I know that some folks in this room participated in that. And I thank you for your contributions. The idea of those focus groups, which again, the data are in progress, and that's actually our first priority to share out in a, in a, in a good way because it was done in the spring. The idea there was to try to understand people's valuing of the river, what, what they cared about in terms of the Damascotta River Estuary, particularly the part that the Shellfish Committee has responsibility for. And also where there might be some areas of question or dissent among different groups of people. And what stood out to me in those data, I'm not the primary one analyzing them, but I had the opportunity to listen to all the discussions and take notes. That was my job. I was the assistant to the graduate student. And what stood out to me was how much common interest came through in those meetings. We had municipal leaders like yourselves. We had aquaculturalists, people working on oyster farms and running oyster farms. We had conservationists. We had wild shellfish harvesters. And I would say almost to a person, it was clear how much each person cared about the river. And for a lot of the same reasons across those different groups. So that was, I think, pretty interesting when we think about the work that the Shellfish Committee is charged to do. One of the things that was on our docket this year is to come up with a management plan, a state required management plan. And so knowing that there's a lot of common interests among the, the people who are directly connected to the river, that seems like a, a good starting point. And also another theme that, that came up in those discussions was questions and sort of imagining about what, what might be done beyond just managing the shellfish resource. So it was a pretty broad ranging set of focus groups by design. So I just wanted to thank, thank the town and the select board in particular, because we, we had those meetings here, I think all three of them. A little bit my hazy, six, six, eight months ago now. And we're looking forward to bringing those data to the Shellfish Committee and also to this, this board and the other select board. Once they're in a shareable format. And we're hopeful that the university, perhaps together with one or both towns can sponsor some sort of event to, to share that information further. One thing that I'm not sure came through when we did those focus groups in the spring, because it's research with people, we have to be very careful about confidentiality. And so the people who were involved in those groups, we assured them that what they said would be kept non-identifiable to them as individual people. So that's something we're thinking through. We want to be as open as we can with the information, but we certainly wouldn't want to betray anybody's privacy in any way. And I'll just say there wasn't really anything that I think is inflammatory that came out, but nonetheless, it's just, it's just good practice when you're studying. So, so that's sort of where the data collection are. Some of you might know that I've transitioned from being head of campus at the Darling Marine Center to being just a regular professor. So I have more time to do things like this and to mentor students and to participate in research projects. And so one of the things I'm figuring out in terms of my own workload this year is what I can do with all this free time since I'm not doing a lot of administrative things. And so I mentioned that first because part of the plan going forward for doing ecological surveys in the river is likely to involve my undergraduate students. And I think it's going to take eighteen months to sort out how we do that. But it's been quite clear from the work of the last several years that we need a consistent way of staffing those surveys and probably summertime university students is not sufficient. So I just want to acknowledge we're still, we're still figuring out that sustainability piece. And the other, and well, and so to that end, I've been writing several grants and through Andy and his counterpart in Newcastle, we've, we've talked about what some priorities might be in terms of the, the community shellfish, or excuse me, the community science program. And we've also discussed that as a shellfish committee a couple of times now. So those grants that are either already submitted or that'll be submitted in the next several weeks, they're focused in two areas. One is figuring out how to sustain this community science program, which is as much, as much about logistics as money. Because I think, again, I can figure out how to structure my teaching responsibilities to to see who's listening to this. The university is a land right at university. They care about these things. I can structure my workday to, to manage some of this, but there's also our commitment to of course involving harvesters to the degree that they're interested and it's possible, but also involving youth. And it's, it's been tricky to figure out all those schedules with low tides and everything else. So a big part of the grants we put in is about more careful deliberation for engagement with youth and harvesters, really trying to build on some of the things we've experimented with on the committee and at the Darling Center, but also crack the nut of how to get particularly students from Lincoln Academy involved in a more regular way. And then, like I mentioned before, the other piece of this grant work is how to sustain these ecological surveys. And the one final thing I'd say on that before segueing to climate resilience, which is the other thing I hope to touch briefly on after you, if you had any questions about the community science. Well, actually, let's, let's, I guess, move on. So the community science update, there's pending grants. There's ecology that's been done. There's social science that's been done. And I just wanted to let you know that that's where things were at because we try to report every fall. And we're a little bit behind on actually delivering results. So are there any questions? Yeah.
Could you tell me where the sites were for the studies for the oysters?
Yes. And this reminds me, Tom, of what I wanted to say. So Westview is one of the three monitoring sites that we've identified with harvesters, including committee members. And so Westview, Days Cove and Chadbourne are the three that we've settled on after several years of surveys in a broader area.
Did you see any difference between those? Because I can tell you anecdotally.
Yeah.
This year, there was a significant drop off of harvesters. They just didn't show up. I mean, Bob Wallace used to be down there like every day.
Yeah.
In previous years, he may come by twice, well, season.
Well, this, this relates to the data gap that I was alluding to. We weren't able to do the clam surveys this year because of different changes in personnel availability. So at this moment, I can't really comment on what we saw at Westview, other than some adult oysters when I was out there about six weeks ago. And, and, and the other two sites. But yeah, my, my sense in talking with my fellow committee members is that there's there's not a lot of soft shell clams or oysters in the upper estuary.
I don't want to dominate here. One last question. Do you think that the, the, the decline in this, the small baby oysters could be associated with increase in diploid?
I mean, I don't know that it's a decline because we've only been looking at it two years and we just haven't seen very many. And it's not clear whether it's because there aren't very many or whether we're not sampling them appropriately. But that's a good question. And we have a separate study in this estuary and two other estuaries to look at the reproductive ecology of the oysters. I believe, well, Sarah Rizley is leading this work. And so I'm not sure what the relative frequency of diploid versus triploid ones that we're sampling, but I can get back to you on that. Yeah. The reason why Westview jogged my memory is in terms of what the Department of Marine Resources cares about with all this stuff we're doing. They care about the biological data collection and they care enough that they actually selected Westview as one of their nearshore monitoring sites. And, and we're working with them to develop protocols that are usable across different sites. So I think that's good because it means that not only will you have the university sampling Westview through time and, and supporting information gathering by the Shellfish Committee, but also the department seems to be moving toward some data collection as well. Yeah.
Heather. That's a question for her. Heather?
So. I'm sorry.
I was just, I, I just like saying behalf of the board and the town. I mean, we, we thank you guys, especially for coming in and keeping us up to date. You know, those focus groups, I think, I was in one, I think with Dan or Tom, I'm trying to remember where. And it was, it was really great. It was just a difference, you know, a bunch of different folks in the community. And, and like you say, all with the same, I mean, the ending result was you're looking to have the same, same goal.
Yes, I think, I think so. I think it'd be fun to have some more conversations like that.
Yeah.
So that's something, yeah, we're thinking about how we might be able to do that before next summer because summer's never a good time for these.
Yes.
But, but because those discussions range so broadly, it got me wondering whether there were things that I or others at the university at the Darling Center could do to support the climate resilience work that, that the board has talked about or that has come forward through the comprehensive planning process or the, the community partnership process. So I just wanted to offer that I'm happy to field questions if there's some way that the university, whether it's the folks here in Walpole, like me, or the whole university system, whether we could be a resource, or if there's projects, you know, I could set students on over the next couple of years.
Yeah, let me just ask Andy because I just want to make sure my memory is correct. Isn't there a university project working on some climate issues here potentially?
Potentially. Coastal rivers is.
I mean, they have um some goals within their organization to work towards. Draw a blank on the organ uh, university connection right now.
Well, there was a, some sort of memory that the town would participate in.
Oh, so the um, I think the Wells Reserve um had applied for um. Some grant funding to, in a kind of shifted as grant. Grant to um, when they get submitted. So um, we had started in and had. I had pushed for on the climate, um, and one of the work groups for the Climate Action Plan to. Um, make sure there's resources there. Like ten years ago, we needed resources to understand where we were vulnerable. To study like where the flooding was likely to happen. Lots of tools out there now that can help towns understand that risk at a higher level. Um, if you want to understand how that pump station's at risk, you're gonna have to dive a little deeper and get an engineer and really look at that, but. Um, but what I feel like we're start, where this community is at, um, we're investing in flood resilience measures. And we've had conversations, we understand where we're at risk generally, but we're at a need where we're trying to understand. Some other things, but there's also still kind of the the bigger question of Main Street. All the work we're doing now for the parking lot, still kind of incremental step based on the projections that are out there. And so. Had pushed for resources to become available to help towns facilitate those bigger conversations of, when do you start talking about? The projections for twenty one hundred.
Right, it could be another ten feet of sea level rise.
Well, you know, and so whether it's at the low end or the high end, it's still. You know, what conversations do we need to have and and who hosts those and is there other resources out there to bring to us to understand the kind of, I mean, there's. Really only a few choices, but how you achieve those.
Scott has selected as one of the test communities.
So that, that's what they kind of grabbed a hold of kind of that idea and it it started out. As a grant to bring two or three communities forward to bring that to them. Um, when they submitted it, it ultimately became. A grant request to NIFWIF for um, kind of standing up training for people to help facilitate. Those conversations with towns um, and building the capacity that way. Um, and then there was a. Possibility of fully funded that maybe there'd be one or two towns that could be kind of like a test on a certain piece of. That and it wouldn't be the full conversation you'd want to have, but it would like dive directly into. I think it was related more to like nearshore kind of solutions. And so it was still a small piece of what I think at some point we're going to talk about. Um, so it was starting to get there, um, but I think that's what.
Yes, yeah, that was the one, yeah. So, but no, climate resilience, obviously, is anything the university can do to help us, obviously, I think would be welcome.
There's a funding opportunity from the state that's due December seventeenth, I believe it it. I talked with this Newcastle Board last week and it sounded like they had a plan that was developing that. Um, not familiar with with exactly what their intentions are, but it. I understand um, from talking with the, with Mike Michael Martin and the town managers that. Um, communities like Dam Roscata and Newcastle that are enrolled in the Community Resilience Partnership are eligible to apply for this funding. Um, so even if that's too short a timeline or it's um, not a timeline, not something that. I could be very useful on if, you know, I could point you toward people who are more on the energy efficiency end of things, or even. For that matter, um, resili- resilience in terms of flood management, but if it was something that related to marine resources or. Connections between our upland areas and our our intertidal and subtitle areas. Um, it might be that that we have some resources locally that we could, we could bring to bear on that. So it really just depends. Where, if and where you were thinking of of putting attention in terms of that grant opportunity or some other things that might become available in twenty twenty five. So I just wanted you to know that I'm I'm a, I'm a resource and um. Outside of my role on the Shellfish Committee, I'm very interested as a citizen of this area and as a. Faculty member at the Darling Center and being helpful if I can.
Yeah, and anything that comes up with.
That's the danger of this, but you know, gotta be brave, right?
Point that, so we're gonna. Great, we we really appreciate you guys coming in and and uh, yeah, keeping, keeping an eye on the river and. And doing what you guys do. So I know data is huge and you need those data points and stuff and we'll be curious as things go on.
Yes, so you heard me say I need to come back and re- report when we've.
And you guys have, you guys, yeah.
I have to say, I was very impressed with all the studies you've already done that were listed on your, I haven't read them yet, but I intend.
Looked at it, it was very impressive.
I'm gonna dive into those.
Okay, well, if you'd like to talk, I know we've had some chats before, but if you'd like to talk about any of the details and. And and I, yeah, it it is interesting because I think the type of conversations we had through the focus groups last spring are so important for. For preparing for what um Andy was just talking about in terms of long term. Um, sea level rise and impacts of that. Um, but the Department of Marine Resources really, they just want us to do that biological monitoring in order to have the the data on. The the shellfish and be able to manage with with an eye toward what's actually out there. So figuring out how to keep those things going and. Um, who, who within the the town government uh, or between the two towns wants to. Be more involved in that, like we're, we're always happy to have more people involved in the community science work for sure. It doesn't just need to be a shellfish committee thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More than welcome to stay. Uh, thank you, thank you. All right, and I think we may have uh, someone here from Revision Energy that's uh, come in via via Zoom, so, yep. I apologize, I'm, I, Tony, Tony, Jim, hi, Tony.
Yeah, hey, can everybody hear me?
We can, we can, yeah.
All right, and can you folks see me too, or are we just?
Yeah, yeah, we can see you.
Excellent. Well, hey, thank you very much for having me. Andy suggested I uh, try to uh, attend a meeting. To hopefully try to address some of the concerns that I hear some folks may have had. Surrounding a uh, electric vehicle charging proposal uh, that we submitted. For the parking lot in the downtown area using Efficiency Main funding. Um, i- is everyone uh, familiar with the proposal? Have you had time to look at it? Okay, great.
So, yeah.
Um, so Andy mentioned that you folks had some concerns. Uh, so basically, I just wanted to. Uh, offer my time to try to address any of those. I know sometimes it's hard to, you know, go back and forth via email and Andy and I unfortunately haven't had a chance to meet in person yet. Um, so I figured this would be a good way to try to hopefully address some of those uh, questions. Uh, so I'm here and available to, you know, help answer any of these questions. It sounds like you had some concerns about some of the ongoing costs of the chargers. Uh, and also potentially dedicating uh, the eight parking spaces for the chargers in the downtown parking lot. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, yeah, I think we had talked about, yeah, the space and then um, there were some questions on, I think, with the, with the, the funding too, or Andy, we. Talked about the potential credits maybe and. We're sure what what the cost may be and what we're.
Yeah, there was never.
Liable for.
Until we actually commit to doing it and submitting it, you know, we don't, you know, I mean, everything points that we would get the thirty percent tax credit back from the IRS, but. You know, no one could actually say, yes, you're going to get it back, because we were fronting the money for all of.
I guess I'd ask Tony, is what's the experience of other municipalities and and getting the um, the the thirty C tax credit?
Yeah, so um, it's a relatively new program, uh, the thirty C program particularly for municipalities. Uh, in the past, there was a federal tax credit that was available, uh, uh, you know, going a few years back. Um, but it, until recently, it was only available for for-profit entities, for-profit businesses. So what's different, uh, you know, this time around is that it's available for municipalities and nonprofits. Um, so because it's so new, I I I don't have direct experience with. Uh, telling you how other municipalities uh, actually received it. All I can tell you is, is that I have all the documents from the IRS stating that municipalities are qualified. And that it's basically just a function of your normal, uh. If you, if you do uh, submit a informational tax return. Uh, on a yearly basis, and if you don't, then you would just have to submit one for this, for this purpose. Um, and that would come into play basically once the project is completed. Um, and the way that it works is that you are essentially just submitting the paperwork and even though you. As a nonprofit entity, don't owe any taxes, the government is issuing you a check for that amount regardless of tax liability.
Do you know if any other municipality has actually moved ahead with a project like this?
Oh, yes, yeah. So uh, just my uh, myself alone, I have currently. Nine or ten projects already approved through Efficiency Main and under contract throughout the state of Maine. And 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 I'll take a step back too, just so that you folks know, Revision Energy is a South Portland, Maine based company. And also with an office in Liberty, and I personally reside in the Bethel area, just so that you know uh, a little bit about me and where we're from. Um, so some of the other towns uh, that we have currently have projects with. Uh, very similar projects using the same funding sources. Uh, Old Orchard Beach Chamber of Commerce, Ken, uh, the City of Augusta is moving forward, two projects, Booth Bay Harbor. Ellsworth, Dover Foxcroft. Um, those are just some of the municipalities and uh, also working with Gulf of Maine Research Institute, which is a nonprofit. Uh, and all of these are using the same Efficiency Main funding and the thirty C federal tax credit. Uh, all of these organizations already went through their various procedures to vet all of this funding. Um, and as a result of their, their due diligence, they decided to move forward with the uh, great opportunity that. These funding sources are providing them.
Yeah, I think one concern was is whether there was additional out of pocket costs in addition to the, obviously, the. Then between the credit and the incentives, it pretty much pays for the project. But I think there was a concern of other costs that might not be factored in. Uh, whether it's the CMP costs or or site preparation or some other, or something else.
Yeah, yeah, so um, really the only cost um, that sometimes comes into play. Uh, is a additional CMP costs. However, I'll say that that wording in the proposal. Is is really there for um, projects like DC fast charger projects, level three, three-phase chargers. Where the, where the transformer from Central Main Power is actually a pad-mounted transformer on the ground. Um, this type of installation, the transformer is pole-mounted. Um, I've never run into a situation where CMP actually charges for that. Um, uh, i- in this scenario, that is almost always free. Um, i- i- I would be extremely surprised if CMP came back with any cost for that. Um, because it's basically just like a residential electrical service. And uh, so basically, if you built a new house and you wanted to connect it to sa- Central Main Power. Um, via an overhead service, as long as your house is within one hundred and fifty feet of the overhead lines, there's no cost to you. The same would go for this project. Um, in addition to that, there's actually um, stipulations in our contract. That state if for some strange reason CMP did come back and say, hey, this is actually going to cost X number of dollars. That actually allows you as an organization to say, okay, we're actually not going to move forward with the project. Um, that, that's, there's two ways that the contract can can uh, be canceled. One is the way that I just described. And the other is if for some reason the Efficiency Main funding isn't approved.
Where, where is the um? The actual, where is it built? Like, who, who produces the product?
The, the charger hardware itself?
Yeah.
So this is manufactured by a company called ChargePoint. Uh, they are the largest charger network in the world, second only to Tesla. Uh, so most folks that have an EV are already very familiar with ChargePoint. Uh, they're all over the state of Maine currently, including uh, all over our uh, turnpike plazas. So all of the chargers that you see along the turnpike, uh, they either say Tesla or they say ChargePoint.
Okay.
And uh, beyond that, the requirement, because this is federally funded uh, money. That's funneled through Efficiency Main, there's a federal requirement that the chargers actually be Buy America certified. So uh, these particular chargers, they're actually manufactured in the United States.
Okay.
I'd shared, um, one of the concerns that, or questions can slash concerns we had had, looking at the first time was its placement. Proposed placement along the waterfront. Uh, the edge of the Riverfront Park there in the guardrail. Um, in its proximity to just flood scenarios and floodwaters, um. We're, we're actually at this meeting talking about the purchase, potential purchase of a deployable flood wall. Um, right now, our intention would be to deploy it on asphalt, and so it would be basically the charger to still be on the other side of the wall. Um, at the moment is what we're anticipating, so. It's just like playing through that scenario and and I had shared and you would thought that these could be built. Um, and stood up a little bit taller so that the units themselves were above the flood plain potentially.
Yeah, yeah, so a couple of things that we can talk about there, um. The, the, the charger itself is actually located, I'd say approximately three feet above the ground. Um, so even though when you look at it, it's a tall pedestal that sits maybe six or seven feet high. Um, the, the, the screen where the actual charger electronics is about three feet above the ground. So if you had waters that were coming in, you know, a couple of feet, you'd have no issues uh, with that whatsoever. Um, i- if you started getting up to the three foot mark, then you could potentially have an issue where the water could get into the charger hardware. Um, and we could try to actually raise the chargers a little bit higher. Uh, to try to mitigate the, the, the odds of 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 that happening, you know, I'm not sure what, you know, historically. What, what you've experienced there uh, for flooding as far as li- of water height, but. You know, the, the, those are my initial thoughts is that it's, as long as you're not getting water up to about the three foot mark, you, you should be fine.
And then in terms of the, you know, we didn't have a chance to really kind of build out an estimated. You know, revenue stream to relative to covering the costs of the power and whatever maintenance we might have, um. I mean, for example, the maintenance, you know, the ones that were installed previously by you, by your company, um, our last I knew anyways, were still had parts on backorder from. Almost a year ago. Um, and some of that might have been held up partly just because we were going through this process in the last few months, but. Um, you know, so just in terms of like, there is maintenance cost that we, we now have realized, uh, and we don't currently have a way to. Uh, meter and charge the fee for those, these ones would be metered and we could charge the fees. And so it's just trying to understand a little bit more about that side of it and. Um, you know, we can build it to cover the cost, but we also, how do we estimate the usage and how do we start thinking about that? In terms of what that burden might be for the tax.
Sure.
Or guaranteeing it'll be as little as possible for the taxpayers.
Yeah, absolutely. These are great questions and, you know, I'll be honest with you, these are, these are concerns that uh, a lot of folks raise when, when I. Am providing proposals to various municipalities around, around the state. Um, basically, how the metering works is that. Um, what, I I'll try to use an example. So most folks that I've, I've dealt with. Uh, when we look at their electricity rate from Central Main Power, they're usually paying somewhere around twenty five cents. Per kilowatt hour for the electricity. That's the cost of the town. Um, obviously, that can vary a little bit, but just for an example, say twenty five cents per kilowatt hour. Um, what we usually suggest in this scenario is that uh, we start the rate that you charge. Uh, users of the chargers at thirty five cents per kilowatt hour. So that means in theory, you're making ten cents on every kilowatt hour that you're dispensing at the charger. And uh, just to give folks a sense of what that means. Uh, a lot of electric vehicles on the. Uh, a lot of electric vehicles on the road nowadays, uh at least the cars. Uh, have a battery somewhere in the range of around seventy five to uh a hundred kilowatt hours. Uh, fully to so so to fully charge it from empty to full would take somewhere between seventy five to one hundred kilowatt hours. And you multiply that by ten cents theoretical profit, you can see that it adds up, it can add up pretty quickly. Um, and then when you get into some of the larger electric vehicles that are on the road nowadays, like the SUVs and the trucks. Uh, you're talking batteries that are at a minimum of like a hundred and twenty five kilowatt hours, all the way up to like two hundred and fifty kilowatt hours. So some of the larger vehicles, you could be making even more money on them, uh you know, or or seeing more revenue from them. So it's really just a matter of just uh, you know, setting a a fair rate. So that the the municipality has the uh ability to maintain the chargers and also. Uh, cover the cost of electricity and potentially even use the 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 extra funds to. To, you know, help fund some of your other projects in the town or even roll it into potentially adding more EV charger infrastructure in other parts of the town.
We'd also want to cover the costs of the ChargePoint fees to have it be metered, right, or be networked.
Correct, so um and there's a couple strategies that we can uh employ to 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 limit that. Um, the basic rate structure from from uh. ChargePoint is that they charge you uh three hundred and sixty five dollars per year per charging port. To to be connected to their network and and and, you know, for all like the credit card fees and all that stuff. Um. The 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 cheaper way to 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 do that, uh to minimize those costs. Is they offer a five year upfront purchase of that of those networking fees. Um, which gives you a slight discount. The more important thing is that if we include the five year networking package uh from the beginning. Uh, with all of the funding packages. Uh, you would actually be able to take that cost. And apply the thirty percent federal tax credit to it. Whereas if you paid for the fees later, you wouldn't. So not only you getting a little bit of a discount by buying five years worth of networking fees upfront. Then you're also taking thirty percent of that off because the thirty percent federal tax credit applies.
You're saying that'd be that'd be another twelve to fifteen thousand dollars if I if we had eight eight ChargePoints for a five year.
Yeah, so three sixty five times eight uh is two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars a year. Uh, times five, fourteen, six. Uh, that's if you didn't buy it upfront, uh it is, there is a little bit of a discount if you buy it upfront. And then thirty percent off of that as well.
What's the five year upfront cost?
I don't have the exact figure in front of me, uh if I had to estimate, they probably take five or ten percent off, something like that.
Okay.
So it, you know, when when you look at it, I mean, yes, it is a significant cost. However, uh all it doesn't take much usage of the chargers to make back that cost. Because in theory, you're you're you're, you know, even in the example that I provided of char- of charging ten cents more than what you're paying for electricity. That's that will add up over time pretty quickly.
Tony, I think uh one of the other things we discussed too is um uh. This proposal is building out four chargers and I think we talked like eight eight charger, but two for dual point.
Yep.
For dual point and. Is is far as the um incentive or whatnot, is that like the minimum amount? Or if you did two dual points or there's other?
Yeah, so the Efficiency Maine funding requires a minimum of four charging plugs, so two two dual port. The reason, the primary reason why I uh was trying to steer you folks to the direction of the eight ports. Is that the way the funding is structured. It it's worded this way, it says the Efficiency Maine will cover up to eighty percent of the total project cost. Or up to ten thousand dollars per charging port. What we're finding is that because. Almost all of these installations require a new electrical service. And because they require excavation and all that kind of stuff to install these. That we're gonna hit that for that uh ten thousand dollar per port cap. Way before we hit the eighty thousand dollar uh eighty percent uh max. So the the what I'm trying to get at is. Is that it actually would result in a a higher out of pocket expense for the town to go with less chargers than it would for to go with these. I I priced it at at the pro- uh I tried to get it so that you had the the uh the closest to zero out of pocket expense. And we got to a hundred and fifty dude uh one hundred and fifty two dollar out of pocket expense is what we got to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good, that that includes the the income from the usage?
No, no, we're just talking about the the total project cost to install them. Is a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and three dollars.
Okay.
Efficiency Maine covers eighty thousand dollars of that. And then the thirty C federal tax credit is thirty four thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars. That leaves you with a total project cost of one hundred and fifty two dollars for this project.
Tom, you can pay for that?
Yeah.
And one other thing I I I think is probably worth mentioning. Um. We actually negotiated a extremely discounted price for the charger hardware. Normally, these chargers would be approximately twice this price. And we anticipate that probably in six months to a year. This price won't be available anymore because ChargePoint will have decided that they will no longer give us this discount anymore. We basically approached them and said, listen, we have. A a dozen projects under contract. But the only way that they're going to be economically viable for the municipalities in the state of Maine is if we can get them as close as possible to a zero. Out of pocket expense. And the only way that we're going to be able to do that is if you give us a a very deep discount. And fortunately, we are able to do that. So that's also reflected in this price.
Can I ask a sort of a? A worrisome question for myself is is that if we don't do this now? Is it possible that this type of tax credit will go away in the in the next year?
Yes.
And so and is it based upon our fiscal year or is it based upon a calendar tax year?
Uh.
Cause our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, so.
It it's based upon the year that the chargers were installed and commissioned.
Okay.
So at this point, we're talking about twenty twenty five.
Okay.
So meaning uh but at the end of twenty twenty five, you would file your informational tax return. And then that's the point when you would uh submit the paperwork showing that you installed these chargers.
Yeah, would we, do you perceive any risk to the tax credit going away in twenty twenty five?
No, no, I don't think so, uh no not, no, I I I think that if we wait and then I tried to do this project. Like uh started in twenty twenty five and then it completes in twenty twenty six. Then I think we might have an issue um or or could have an issue.
Okay. Hmm, thanks. Oh. Yeah, um come on, I'll get you on the mic over here, I'm sorry, I don't have a wanted hand out there, but.
Uh, my name is Clayton Giggie and I'm a resident. Uh, regarding EV, I have an EV.
Yeah.
And I I just received a letter from Efficiency Maine saying funding is uh now a little bit harder to get. And they did put an effective date down.
Yeah.
Now, this is for an individual, I don't know if this comes out of a different bin or not. But it sounds like the nature is. There's a lot of EVs out there, there's a lot of need for this, they're spending the money.
Limited amount of funds.
Limited limited amount of funds, so they just sent me just because I was part of Efficiency Maine, a courtesy letter saying. Effective this day, things are changing.
Yeah, impressive.
Yeah, but it may be a different pot of money.
It could be.
Yeah, yeah.
She made an umbrella and there could be different sections under.
It is indeed a a completely separate pool of money, uh I received that same email myself. Um, and I just purchased, uh our family just purchased our second electric vehicle, so now we have no gas vehicles at all. Um, and uh, when I got that email, I very quickly ran down to the town office and registered my vehicle. So that I could submit for the Efficiency Maine uh rebate, the two thousand dollars that this gentleman just mentioned. Uh, but the money that we're talking about from Efficiency Maine is a separate pool.
Yeah.
Um, that and I will say that. Once Efficiency Maine issues the letter saying that we have awarded you this money for this project, the money is yours. You 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 basically then, all you have to do is we just have to make sure that we get it installed by June of next year. And Efficiency Maine will give you the money, it's not that they continue trying to getting applications from other towns. The that money is earmarked for you. So that the urgency is in applying.
Gotcha, okay, so just to to recap a little bit, everybody, so. There's a a a a good chance that. We have a very small investment. In the project, um and then we possibly create a revenue stream that pays for ongoing maintenance and. Back into the town, so let's kind of, yeah, okay.
And on top of that, um. The ChargePoint does have a it what what it what it placed to uh basically a a extended warranty program. Where you can opt to buy an extended warranty. I generally advise folks to not bother with that on level two chargers. Because there's there's very rarely a problem with them. It's when you when you get into the level three DC fast chargers that I recommend going with an extended warranty. Because the cost of the hardware is way, way higher. Just to give you an idea, you know, we're we're looking at like a hundred and fourteen thousand for this project. If this was a DC fast charger, it would be over a million.
Yeah, we wouldn't be having this conversation, would we?
Yeah, so I yeah, but I mean, there there could be funding later that we could come back and then also put in DC fast chargers in your area as well. Um. But that there isn't right now.
What, Tony, what is the standard uh warranty on uh um on the ChargePoints?
ChargePoint has a one year warranty on the chargers. Um, beyond that, then basically you would have to cover the cost of whatever um w- w- could potentially go wrong. However, my experience uh in putting these in at various other places. Uh, they're they're pretty pretty bulletproof. Um, these, these are un- unlike the chargers that uh may have been put in in the past, I believe. And I apologize, I'm I wasn't uh involved in the project that was that you folks initially put in chargers. But I believe those are the Clipper Creek chargers, they're the the white ones, non non networked. Yeah, so the ChargePoint ones are specifically designed to be public chargers. So they, in my opinion, were designed to be more robust. Whereas the Clipper Creek chargers, the initial design of those was that they were primarily a residential based charger. That then they they adapted to be also available for public use. That and um. Clipper Creek was actually bought out by a company called Enphase. Um, and I believe that's why that there may have been some issues with like parts availability is because of that. Transaction uh in change of ownership of the companies. Uh, ChargePoint, I don't believe is in any danger of that happening anytime soon, they're actually a publicly traded company. And like I said, the largest uh non Tesla network in in the world.
What what happens to the proposal that we have in terms of its cost if we? Put four or two ports or yeah, two stations in the taco alley. You know, replacing the one that's essentially out of service and on, you know, can't be fixed perhaps. And then another one next to it. And then put potentially two more spaces in another location in the parking lot.
So you could put them in different spots in the parking lot. Efficiency Maine doesn't really care about that. They do want it to be in the same location, in other words, like you can't have it like like two here and then two five miles down the road. But if it's in the same parking lot, they don't care about that. However, I would say that the total project cost would probably increase significantly. Because the way that you optimize the project is to have them all lined up in one row. And all attached to the same electrical service. So when you start spreading them around the parking lot. You start uh increasing the cost of excavation, you increase the cost of having to trench across your parking lot. And potentially increase the cost of the interconnection with the CMP grid. Because then you have to connect the different chargers in different ways. So although it's 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 possible, I think it would result in a significantly higher out of pocket expense using that method.
So you would envision just, let's assume we got these these eight chargers, uh the other two would just go away, right?
Yeah.
And you've talked about that and um having them removed somehow.
Not.
Or that would be on.
The cost removed, the old ones are included in this, we'd have to do that additionally, right?
No, they're they're not included in this and it's not a requirement that you have to remove them. Um, my understanding is that you have two and one isn't working, or are they both not working?
Uh, you know, they're they're both the and it's just the little clips that kind of keep it secure in the vehicle.
Yeah.
And so both of those are now have been broken.
Yeah.
And it's just need to replace those little clips that are on there.
Don't they also have the problem that? The the um, the restroom.
Well, it's not a same circuit. It's not a problem per se, other than we can't separate the amount of electrical use of those because it's running off the same.
We could have a charge panel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
The only other had was the breaker might have been a a series of bad breakers that were installed at that time, I think revision um. If it was you, Tony, or someone else I was talking to at the company, they thought they is they was potentially seeing other. Installs about the same time in other places that there might be a faulty.
That that was Josh, uh not myself, but I I do recall him mentioning that at a meeting that I was a part of. That there may have been a batch of bad breakers. Um, so there's a couple of ways that you folks could address that, um. One is that I'm confident that eventually we will be able to find the parts for you. Um. Worst case, the chargers themselves could be replaced and and I will tell you that the cost to do that is actually pretty minimal. Because the 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 tho- those chargers are significantly less expensive than these types. Because they are very basic chargers with no no way of charging, you know, uh a cost to to use them. They're called non networked uh uh chargers, whereas the ones that we're proposing now are networked chargers. Um, so worst case scenario, we could actually replace the chargers themselves. If you folks wanted to continue offering charging in that location as an amenity. However. I believe the the better strategy would be to remove those chargers. Uh, because you then that removes the liability of having to provide electricity to folks that are using those chargers. Uh, at no cost to the town. And you know, where you're trying to install chargers that have a fee. It's kind of counterproductive to have other chargers right down the street that are free.
Right, yeah, yeah. What would um uh, you know, put you on the spot, but re- removal cost for the that existing charger, is it fairly minimal or?
Well, um, you know, to be honest with you, it would be pretty simple for someone, uh. You know, even if you have like someone in the town that handles your electrical work. To just go there and un, you know, uh take the chargers off the pedestals. It would take, you know, like twenty minutes to do that. Um, Revision would more be more than happy to do it for you, but I would be willing to bet you that. If you have someone in your own municipality that can do that, it would be like next to nothing to do that.
Okay.
If you did it a different story, if you wanted to like go as far as like digging up the 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 post that it was attached to.
And the bollards that are around it.
Right, right. Personally, I would suggest going with just removing the chargers. Uh, or the or just shut the breaker off and put a sign on them that says out of service. Because there is a possibility that later. With future rounds of funding, we could also put pay to use chargers in that location. And then the 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 wiring that is already in a buried underground can be reused. So that's an asset to the. So that's an asset to the town, so I wouldn't necessarily go as far as removing all of that.
Good, makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay. And as more and more people have more electric vehicles.
Right, there's gonna be more of a need.
Yes.
And, um, when I came up and did a site visit. Um, I was pleased to see that there were quite a few electric vehicles parked in the parking lot where, where I'm proposing installing these chargers. So, um, I know that sometimes municipalities have a concern about dedicating char, uh, parking spots to EV char, to EVs. A good amount of EVs were already in your parking lot when I came up. And what that means is that if you had chargers, they would have just been at a different parking spot and you would have been cap- capturing revenue from them.
Is there an allowance to partner with a private property owner? With the public interest of parking here and, in those ChargePoint spots, um, so they, you know, should, you know, maybe it's advantageous to not put them in our parking lot. We're finishing up or getting ready to start paving on, remember I mentioned to you, Tony, what, if we do this, is there a chance? You know, we could get the, any underground work done before we put asphalt down, because we're, you know, it's a pretty substantial project we're doing. I don't want to see us rip up that asphalt to put these in, and so, you know, if it was. You know, to avoid the floodplain to, you know, if there was a private property that, you know, saying, hey, like, we'll allow the public to park here and, and install these units in our property. Would that be allowable through the grant?
Yeah, they, they, they don't care. Efficiency main doesn't care that it's on private or public land. Uh, what they care about is that the chargers are available to the public.
Okay.
Um, however, uh, you know, there's gonna be some constraints to that because, uh. Not from efficiency main standpoint, but from the viability of the project, because partly for some of the reasons we've already discussed where. In order to make it as, as, as cheap as possible, we really need to be looking at eight charging ports. So you have to be, be able to find a business that is able to put in eight charging ports in their parking lot. And what I've found is that it's very difficult to get a small business to dedicate eight parking spots. Because they, they're gonna look at it a little bit differently than a municipality and a town-owned public parking lot.
Where are we thinking?
Um, the other thing to consider too is also i- i- you know, is the parking lot of that business. Gonna present challenges when connecting them to the grid? Because the location that I scoped out for you folks has a pretty easy connection. That's not the case for a lot of sites. I- if, if it involves like line extensions or trenching across parking lots. All, all of those things make the cost go up. And the other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, we could certainly look at uh the possibility of doing this. But the more time we spend doing that. The more we risk that this funding runs out. Uh, because until they approve your project, the money is available for everyone else to grab.
So Andy, um, and you hit on a little, pardon my question, but um, yeah, we would need to. That get this coordinated, because yeah, I agree. I don't think any of us wanna come in afterwards and dig up uh. Nice new pavement, which we see so many times in projects, so, so we'd have to coordinate somehow to get this in before the final.
Right, you mean you have the little bit of luxury there, because they do the finish lift, the, the final lift in, in the spring.
Yeah, so we've got.
Definitely want to get it in before that one.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I mean, yeah, base coat is one thing, but the finished, finished pavement and stuff, we'd have to get in before that, so. So we'd be talking about getting this uh, this application in.
Right away.
Yeah, so just to give you folks an idea of how the process would work if you decide that you want to move forward with it. Um, basically, now that the proposal is prepared, all we have to do is create a contract between Revision Energy and the town. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the contract is contingent on the funding being awarded from Efficiency Main. Meaning that if the approv, the funding is not approved, you do not have to move forward. Once the contract is signed, I actually do all of the work for you to, to, to. Fill out and submit the funding application to Efficiency Main. There's no additional uh lift for you folks. Um, I, I do all of that for you and submit it, and typically within thirty days, we have an approval from Efficiency Main. Uh, when we get the approval, it's, it's in the form of an official letter from them saying we've now allocated the funds to your project. And as long as we get the project completed by June of next year. Uh, and you submit the, 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 the documents saying that you, you, that it's done and it's paid for. Typically, within thirty to sixty days, they mail you the reimbursement check.
The other thing we should be mindful of is the, I mean, it's not uncommon for us to front. Money and have projects reimburse us, but this one might be just, I mean, it's like complicated, but we may have to. For that thirty C tax credit, I mean, if we're potentially gonna span. Tax years, that means our rebate wouldn't be coming back to us until hopefully early twenty-six, which would put us in the next, our next fiscal year. Um, and so I don't know if we'd have to for that, we'd have to front that money, because that's gonna be a long gap before we get that back.
The thirty-four thousand.
Right, yeah, so whatever that, whatever our kind of cost is, less the grant, um. You know, we might.
Right, that's, that's roughly thirty-four thousand.
To use fund balance to pay for that upfront, and then we would get reimbursed and it would just go back into the fund balance.
Okay, correct.
Know of any other reserve we have right now that we'd really be able to utilize this with.
But we couldn't do it with that.
You'd have a special.
Special town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, another thing that might be worth mentioning is that the way that we designed the charger site. Uh, we are actually trying to avoid touching your pavement at all. The chargers are actually located at the edge of the pavement, not in the pavement. So just something to keep in mind.
Just the bollards in front of those would have to be installed.
Correct, well, the, in this case, we're actually using the um, the fence that's there. Instead of bollards.
Well, we're gonna, they're not on the edge, they're behind the.
We're gonna have different fences.
We will have a different fence. They're gonna be on the backside of that.
The, the way that we have it currently designed is that the chargers are located behind, directly behind the fence. And but they'll still be accessible by people because you just reach over the fence and grab the port, the charging port.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So it's actually not, uh, the way it's currently designed is not actually impacting your pavement.
Interesting, okay.
Is there no space?
Well. I don't know, risk seems relatively low.
And it makes money for the town.
The, the other thing that's important to consider, uh, and I always love mentioning this, is that it's not just about the theoretical ten cents per kilowatt hour. That you're gonna gain by people using them. It's the, it's the benefit to the community and the, the benefit to the local businesses on Main Street. Because there's actually been numerous studies that have proven this now, that having public EV chargers near businesses. Results in direct increases in, 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 in uh money spent at those businesses. Because people are gonna spend a couple hours at these chargers. And while they're doing that, they're gonna walk along your Main Street and they're gonna spend money at those businesses. That's, that's the biggest benefit.
Not being familiar with um, how much of a charge you can get and how far you can go on a charge. If someone comes into Damascata, and it, and it makes sense, I mean, what the state's looking, in part trying to also do is like, identify locations that. You know, like say, coming from Portland, you know, where are you gonna, and, and so people, someone comes to Damascata, they're running low on charge. They plug in for two hours. Where, how far are they getting on a two-hour charge if they were pretty close to?
Yeah, good question. Um, these, another, another term for this type of charger is called destination chargers. Um, and the reason why it's called that is because. Basically, they are best suited for locations where people are already spending a couple hours. So i- 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 it's perfect where we're talking about putting them, because you have Main Street with all the restaurants and businesses there. So people can plug in their car, go have lunch, go have dinner, go shop, and in a couple hours. You would gain anywhere between sixty to eighty miles of range. So it's not like when you go to a DC fast charger along the side of the highway. Where you stop there for fifteen to thirty minutes and that gains you about eighty percent of your battery back. It, it, the, these chargers are for places where you're already spending time. It's a different mindset, like you, you, it, it's not, it's not the same as going to the gas station and topping up in this, in this instance. It's, it's charging while you're doing something.
Tony, did you have a question or comment?
Comment.
Yeah.
Miles per hour at a charge to category two charger. Just a result, I completely didn't panel, that's an AC, I'm gonna say about, uh, low voltage, two point volts, I can go thirty miles.
Yeah, that, that's, that's about what I was saying, so about thirty to forty miles per hour is what you're gonna gain.
Yeah, okay. Interesting. Well, you cleared up, I, I mean, if there's any other questions, I mean, we've cleared up a lot of, I think, some of the concerns we had. I mean, I think the big one was. Getting on the hook for, for, for money, you know, that we weren't sure about, um, be a little more comfortable that. With the contract stipulation that if it doesn't come through, we have the ability to. You know, to rethink it. I mean, that's a, that's a little more comforting, and we're not locked into something.
Yeah, and, and I'll say that, um, uh, there's really only been one application that I've submitted so far. Out of probably a dozen that they didn't approve. So the odds are, are, I, I would be extremely surprised if they didn't approve it.
Why didn't they?
Uh, in that particular case, it was primarily because we actually submitted two separate applications. For two locations within the same town. And they approved one, but not the other one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, alright.
So Andy, if we wanted to, you know, if the board felt like moving forward, what, uh, you know, what are you, what are you thinking?
Just trying to. With the stipulation and the contract, I, I'm thinking you have to have, I'm almost wondering if you have to have voter approval before you submit, because if, if we get. The grant, right, we have a meeting scheduled for the tenth.
Yeah.
Town meeting, and so. You know, the, 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 the change of the money not being there increases, but, so you could have another special time meeting before that if you wanted. Um, with it being so close to where it's already scheduled, I don't know if you want to wait till then and run that risk, um. I think with the voter's approval to utilize fund balance, if, if awarded the grant, uh, to front that additional thirty percent. Um. You'd be able to go after this.
I will say that some towns, um, a- and I, and I do admit that I understand that every town has different rules, but some towns. Got around the voter approval side of things, or, or the need to do that with a special meeting. Because they said they were using, I believe the term was discretionary funds. Um, so I don't know if that's, you know, anything that helps you folks at all or not, but I've heard that mentioned to me from some other towns. Because ultimately you're getting it back.
Our voter approved, our voter approved contingency, I believe, is eighteen thousand for the year for the entire town budget.
Okay, so yeah, like I said, it's different with every town.
Yeah.
But, but all, it, it usually helps with the process because you know that it's, you're not, yes, you're spending it, but you're getting it reimbursed. So it, that usually helps.
Do we have time to put it on the next?
Yeah, we have plenty.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we should, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Um, it sounds like, you know, it's an opportunity, I mean, like to say, I, I, I'm in the parking lot every day and, yeah, it's just, you're just moving cars around. You know, there's, um, I see the EVs down there quite a bit, so I don't see it nearly taking up extra space, just shifting them from. Here, down, here.
That, and, and if anything, you're gonna see.
Going down, going up.
Right, and if anything, you're gonna see more EVs in the parking lot as a result of having those chargers, because you. You also would be more like, more than likely to have people come and charge there and spend money downtown. That would have, would have probably kept going if they didn't have the opportunity to charge there.
Mm-hmm, definitely. Okay. Alright, well. Anybody else? Any questions? No, seems like we, yeah, I think we've got most of the questions answered, and so, um. When's that, yeah, when are we looking at date wise for the?
Uh, December tenth, I believe, is when we have the special.
That's the special time, right, December tenth?
Yep.
Okay.
So what I would personally suggest is if, if the town is in agreement that you do want to attempt to, to make use of this. I would suggest that we move forward to the point where we can submit the funding application to Efficiency Main. Without any further delay, because you still have the opportunity to. Like, you, you basically still have to wait for Efficiency Main to approve it, and in the meantime, you could have your meeting. To approve the, the, the thirty C funding, uh, floating of that funds. Just an idea, I mean, I, I don't know if that works for you, but that's what I would personally suggest, rather than waiting another month and then submitting it.
The only risk we run is if, you know, the voters decide they don't want to proceed with that. And we've already gone through the process to submit the application, and Efficiency Main says, you're good, we're giving you the eighty grand. But our voter said, no, we're not raising the thirty-seven thousand. You're saying, our contract says we're obligated to proceed if we get the Efficiency Main funding.
You, you actually have, uh, at that point, the option to still tell Efficiency Main that you are no longer accepting the funds. So when, when they, when they send you the, the, you and me, the notification that you were approved. Then the next question is, do you want to accept these funds? And you can say no at that point.
Great, so yeah, as long as our contract with Revision allows that opportunity, I think when you had explained it before, I thought I had heard anyways, that if we got the funds. Not if we said, yes, we're still gonna take the funds, thanks for awarding them to us, but if awarded us the, the money we requested, that.
Yeah.
I was, thought I was hearing that we were obligated to proceed, so if there was still an opportunity for the town to say. You know, we didn't get the approval from the voters, so we, we can't say yes to the funds, then that's great.
Right, I, I, I believe in i- in this instance, where, where, we're running up. Uh, against a, a timeline where the funds could run out. And, and I'm suggesting that we try to expedite it as, as, as much as possible. That I would go back to our team and ask that the contract be worded, that it will actually allow you to back out by saying. Uh, we, we actually are not gonna accept these funds from Efficiency Main if, if the voters don't approve that. As long as you folks, you know, have a, have a pretty good level of, of confidence that it's, it is gonna move forward. Because, under the understanding that it does take a considerable amount of, of. Uh, time on our part to actually complete the application and submit it for you folks. That's all we're trying to avoid, is that, you know, the, the, the time of doing all of this work and then it doesn't go through. But, you know, in this instance, we'll work with you, you know, we want to make this happen.
Exactly. That sounds satisfactory, doesn't it, Andy? We get some outs, well, I mean, it seems like we've got some, some outs there, if, if.
If the town doesn't approve it, then we're not in.
Yeah, so, okay. I, uh.
So it's gonna be how we present it.
Yeah. Think we should move ahead.
I do too.
Gathering, we get nods, maybe, yeah. We need a motion?
I mean, there'll be a, a draft warrant, so I mean, perhaps making the motion to add it to the warrant for the twelve-ten would be helpful, um, for the record.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll make a motion to add to the warrant for December tenth, um.
Utilizing, is that the right word?
I mean, just, yeah, I think, you know, if you would word your motion in a way that, you know, place to, to have, to move forward with this proposal from Revision Energy. To place, um, the funding request, you know, to the town at, on the twelve-ten warrant.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to move forward with the application process with Revision Energy. Uh, with the um, EV charger project and, um. Add December tenth to the warrant, um, with approval by the, the, the voters for, uh, to. Approve funding to be used to cover the, 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 the tax credit cost. Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, reimbursement, yeah, something like that, does that make sense, Andy?
Does.
My, my rambling.
He's got a couple of days to.
Yeah, everybody understand that out there, alright. Oh, alright.
So there's a motion.
Okay, Dan's gonna second, any discussion on?
Okay, Dan's gonna second. Any discussion on the motion? Other than what the heck I just said? Oh, okay, we good? All those in favor? Yay, four, yeah, even opposed, yeah, got one opposed down the end here, Josh, so.
You don't want to.
Yeah.
Charging stations?
Yeah, he's got his reasons.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have to get, tell me why, tell people why I voted no, I voted no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so um, yeah, so we can get at least get started on it, and then if things don't go the way, it sounds like we've got some some outs there. So um Tony, you you mentioned, yeah, you look at the contract um um language, you work with your folks, so um and we can have uh a man to look at it, you know, and they get the contract over to you and have our counsel look at it as soon as possible and.
Excellent, and um i if everyone is in agreement, um I I think I'll probably update the proposal to include the five-year networking options so that you folks can have the lowest possible cost in the long run if if everybody is a agreement on that.
I think we should, yeah.
Okay.
In there, yeah.
Definitely.
Okay. All right, perfect. If if any other questions?
No, that's really awesome. Thank you so much.
All right, if there's any other questions, uh you folks know how to get ahold of me, or at least Andy does.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Bye. Thank you, thank you. All right, well, uh, are there any um other citizens' comments this evening? Yeah? Patty?
I'm sitting down on the cemetery yet.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, doing some research for something else, I stumbled on a state statute about ringing bells for Veterans Day in honor of veterans. And not being familiar with that happening, I asked Rob Gregory, who handles the Baptist Church Town Clock Bell, if that was something we did. And Rob said, no, not familiar with it, don't know about it, but we certainly can make it happen. And we kept talking, and he said, well, if you want to do it with me, we can do the Baptist Church and the Firehouse. Okay, the next thing I know, Rob stocked the Lincoln Academy, they're in. Um, Saint Patrick's Church is in, and I've also invited Second Congo and Saint Andrews and Twin Villages, which is in the old Methodist Church building. They all have bells in their steepness.
That's so awesome, Patty.
So then we got worried about um people need to know why all these bells are suddenly ringing at eleven o'clock on Veterans Day. So I mentioned it to Maya Zeward, and she's putting just a little something in the paper so people can know it's not a fire. Um, it is in honor of the the veterans, and it just kind of was one of those, it went.
Sounds good.
And there we are.
Statute.
Would make it that small, though, I make it a little bigger.
I think she's she's gonna maybe put it in the editorial, I'm not sure. Um, so, but I just wanted you folks to know.
With your slow thing, you're gonna find an old statue in there.
It was like, what, what is this? And I said, no, if we can honor veterans.
Yeah, that's great.
So at eleven o'clock on eleven eleven.
Yeah.
Those bells are all hopefully going to be ringing in honor of the veterans.
Yeah, Farmers' Day, great.
Okay.
Patty, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Clayton, did you have anything else in public comment this evening, or you?
I don't have anything to volunteer.
Gotcha, yeah.
I agree with some gender items, you come up and then you end it, yeah.
There is, yeah.
Roundabout.
Yeah, he's in the roundabout there too.
Recognize, I thought, I wasn't sure if Patty was staying for the
Oh, that's those.
But Chief's here for the cruiser and if you want.
Yeah, I was gonna move stuff around a little bit. I I wasn't sure if Patty was staying, so I was gonna suggest that next week off the door, so um we can do uh.
Talk about the roundabout real quick.
Yeah, yeah, we'll move up a few things in the agenda items, so um well, yeah, we'll talk, Clayton, you're here, so if you want to come up, let's uh so under uh discussion items three there, we have the um the main MDOT roundabout.
I think it's the last page, it's in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice thing.
There we go, so.
Cause I have been at the Blue Hill one, and it's nice.
There, all right, so.
Yeah, it is nice.
This has been a project that's been on the, we were presented, oh, God, Josh, help me, pretty good to go?
Yeah, somewhere around there. Clayton, you know one.
It was, I read in the Lincoln County paper in December twenty one, and that's when I wrote my first letter to Matt at the time.
Yeah, it's okay, okay.
And then February twenty two, I replied to a property owner report that they send out to a budding property. And with that, I wrote a letter, copied that, to a MDOT individual expressing my concern about the location of their roundabout associated with my right of way to an abutting property.
Yeah.
And what's happened recently is I got a letter from the state in October inviting me to accompany an appraiser to estimate the value of property to be acquired for the project. And I talked to the individual after that, and he said, I want to make some one thing certain, we will not be taking property, acquiring property. We will be taking slope easements. And the slope easement will engulf the right of way. So I will be, I guess on paper, I could be theoretically left with a landlocked piece of land with no right of way to Belvedere. I have a follow-up letter to them asking if they, I'm sorry, I'm going to follow up with them this Friday, it will be three weeks since I talked to them, asking for any progress or anything that they may offer as a solution. Obviously, they didn't take into consideration my February two thousand twenty-two butter uh or it disappeared, whatever. I did ask them if it was still in file. Uh, but as of right now, uh, the right of way falls in the slope easement that they will be appraising and affects both me and the Bayside Plumbing property.
This is like actual access to your property.
Yes, my property runs from Belvedere, my right of way runs from Belvedere Road over the culverted entrance to Bayside Plumbing to a point on the back uh stone wall behind his property. And it's a very good definite clear definition, uh, the right of way that they show on one of their sketches is incorrect, I've I've advised him of that. And I made reference to a plan drawing sitting in the registry of deeds that accurately depicts the location of the right of way. So I understand there was gonna be some discussion about that today, so I just wanted to be part of the discussion to make sure the board was aware that at one time, it was my understanding there was not gonna be any land taking, I guess by the letter, there's not gonna be land taking.
It's just an easement.
But there could be an easement that could render my.
You in a position or several yourself in other.
It could bring me to a position where I would be landlocked.
Yeah.
Because I'm but I'm on, I have road fundage on bypass route one.
Yeah.
But that's the controlled access highway.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, oh, that's interesting. No, I I wasn't aware.
So if if they did, if he did have to change his right of way and then have to move it over, then Bayside's drainage field would be in jeopardy.
Gotcha.
So if they did have to relocate his right of way. So I guess my question, my question is, does the state have the authority to landlock an individual from their property? And what avenues would? You know, we're trying to help one of our town residents so he doesn't get landlocked from his land. Yeah, how can we help and assist that he doesn't get landlocked from a project that originally we were told that no things were gonna get taken, but it's just an easement, but it's really a right of way. So you were in the meeting, right? So did 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 it appear that they're gonna seriously consider the revision?
I mean, my understanding was that at that meeting, um, they were still interpreting the deed, and their understanding of the deed as they interpreted it was that there weren't um stated like meets and bounds of the easement going across that property. It's not an argument to say that there's an issue, but it's just like them, you know, trying to put this on paper on a plan, it wasn't they not seeing the plan that was filed, I don't know if that was referenced, presumably it was referenced in the deed, so I assume they'd know to be able to find it, but however it led there, I mean, the deed description, you know, there weren't meets and bounds of what they were saying, it talked about the culvert. They assume it to be here, but it wasn't clear in the deed description. So that was how we, what we talked at that point, I relayed what you and I had talked about and what was shared with the board, you know, years ago, and so um I understand that they were just gonna be following up with Clayton and.
Yeah, I am too. I'm gonna take my own initiative to contact the appraiser and ask him, if I don't get anything from him, then I probably will start to be looking for some maybe even some legal assistance.
Um, well, what I'm getting at is, do they seem that they're gonna take it seriously and they want to resolve it?
I think they are, yeah. I mean, they have to, and that's part of the project.
Yeah, yeah.
Have to.
I mean.
Exactly.
But, yeah.
Now, we want to make sure that.
We want them to, yeah.
We want them to, and that we know as the board, we don't want one of our residents and a taxpayer to be landlocked from one of the pieces of property.
I mean, I, in in some way, I'd almost offered to maybe allow the appraisal process to play out. I mean, we have raised it with them, I, you know, you would, I know you had reached out and followed up with even a couple more people on the email, um, so that the project manager was knew about this directly, because they were, you were working with the appraiser almost directly, and so I suggested add the project manager to the email, and it might have been a little overstep, but nonetheless, like, make sure they're aware of it.
Right.
They're already aware. Nothing falls through the cracks, and so I I I would suggest that the board allow that process to play out and and see what comes back um from the appraisal.
I have reservations, because I made it very clear in February two thousand twenty-two, I referenced plans, some registry of deeds, books and pages.
In your letter to them.
In the letter to the, I think it was the project manager manager at the time.
Yeah.
Well, now that, go ahead.
It may have been, may have been at that time, they they didn't even have a plan to do it, because they were looking into when they could do it and that kind of thing, so they maybe just filed your letter and still get to it and forgot about.
Um, but anything's possible, but because it happened once, I'd rather not have it happen again, so.
They want it to happen, I'm just saying, you know, that.
Cause I would hate to have this go to bid, you know, February, whenever it is, and then there's gonna be some heavy equipment reshaping that highway.
Yeah, I don't think they go to bid until they resolve the property concerns.
Yeah, they have to have clear deeds and everything.
They can't just simply go in there and do it, they have to have the easement from you. And they can't just impose that and and file.
That works.
Yeah, so I mean, my understanding is they'd have to get you to agree.
Well, they've already, you know, I gotta, I gotta contact them before the nineteenth this month to set up an appointment to walk with the appraiser uh to observe his activities.
And what what would, in your eyes, what would be satisfactory to to?
As he alluded, it's kind of complex because the road fundage on Belvedere is is very busy. The state owns a lot of right of way from the highway up Belvedere.
Yeah.
Before it turns to Town Road, so you can't move the right of way much further than where than where it originates today, the culverted entrance. You've got a barn straight ahead. The front lawn is the uh leach field.
Yeah.
And the right of way right now goes to the far right edge of the Bayside Plumbing property. I don't see, other than redesigning the leach field so you can drive on it as an option, they do that with the Monstwick Farm, I believe, over to Woolwich.
Oh.
Mon- Monstwick restaurant, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, if you're gonna be interacting with them independently, maybe you could, if something goes awry or even if it goes well, could you let us know?
Yeah, I, that that's a good starting point. I just like to have the
No, I can't.
Be aware that what they said at one time.
Is different.
Shifting a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I I thank you for making us, because we're not, yeah, um, we we don't want to see any citizens get stuck with something or, you know, and and get in a position where you're you're being forced into something, so um we we need to, yeah, keep keep us in the loop and.
But I'll, I I plan to reach out by this Friday, and I'll CC you. Uh, it's just gonna be an inquiry, asking any progress, uh, any up, um, any obstacles that they foresee.
Yeah, I think once they see that plan, I mean, if hopefully they have by now, but they're able to give that to the appraisers part of the consideration, I mean, they need all those pieces to understand.
Yeah.
You know, so even even getting a copy of the um, the location of the leach field for Bayside Plumbing would be.
If it's not, just what happens, this town office has uh the design of that leach field. I can give you the details.
It wasn't by chance noted in in that plan that was filed, was it? Was that built then?
Excuse me?
The plan that's filed with your easement and your access to your property was that by chance their leach field and buildings.
There was no property whatsoever on that, when the when the right of way was issued, first issue in nineteen seventy-three, there was no trailer, no barn, no plumbing, no leach field, no no structures.
Yeah, okay. So the more information documentation we have, the better, yeah.
I mean, that's all stuff they have to take into consideration if they're gonna try and determine what the appraisal and the value of this ease slope easement is, they have to take, out of my mind, take that into consideration. If the only way to get get the access is to move the leach field and redraft the the description um to accommodate their slope, then I would assume a lot of that's gonna fall on them.
They'd have to look into it, right? That would have to be something they have to consider.
They get them, they gotta make it right.
Yeah. They have to make it work, yeah.
I was just looking at nineteen eighty-four. Uh, there were two islands installed on Belvedere. Upper Belvedere and across the highway, and there was actually land taking from both the pre- the previous owner of Purnis Plumbing and the previous owner of the land that I'm speaking of. Only three hundred something square feet, but they did a lot of legal cording because of this, because of this, because of this, we thou shall do this.
I'm not a fan of eminent domain.
I don't want to walk into a situation like that. Hopefully, I'm gonna be allowed to sign on the dotted line, and if I don't sign the dotted line, then.
Yeah, yeah, when something comes across that it says eminent domain on it, I think it's gonna go over well, so. Yeah, but please, please keep, yeah, get whatever information the town can help you out with as far as tax maps and these and whatnot, yeah.
Okay.
So we don't want, uh, thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, mate.
Thank you, Clayton.
Easy as bottle, but we go watch you get stuff or something, thank you.
You can see in their follow-up from that meeting I had, it was also talking about the plantings inside the
Yeah, circle.
Yes, they they've kind of started with a question of if we plant flowers or or something in there that needs maintenance, would the town be able to do, you know, do the maintenance? I'm like,
No.
If if I say no, will it change what goes in there?
I know.
Um, so that prompted them to have a meeting to talk about that, and and they're basically proposing, um, Andrea talked about what they put in Blue Hill, um, and it was just evergreens and low, you know, shorter growth.
Low maintenance.
And I forget the type of tree it was exactly, but you know, more of a dwarf type evergreen, that's not gonna become a an issue with visibility and that kind of.
Right, yeah.
Um, and then the other piece was that to um, aside from uh Clayton's challenges with his property, um, just reiterating the construction tentative schedule for the project, you know, you they have to hit certain benchmarks before they can put it out to bid, but um they're expecting to be able to put it out to bid by February or in February. Um, and at the at this time, they're gonna advertise it with a finish date by end of November, at twenty-five. So it's a pretty quick turnaround, but.
It's all gonna depend on if they get, maybe get some properties to straight away first, so.
Thanks, Clayton.
Thank you. Oh. Okay, well, that's not good, but it's good to know, there's a, yeah. And these projects don't go as smoothly as they anticipate, so. We're getting stuck with anything. Um, so let's get the chief up here then, he's sitting back there, right? Yeah. So we're running out of orders. We're gonna.
I'm on. It's so cool. Yes.
Bounce all over the place, the roundabout we did, so Chief's here with the lease reserve request for replacement cruiser, yes. He sent us some old information and wearing these cars out.
Thank you, folks, I do have a, he might have actually included it, yes, okay, so I have the same prints out as you do. Um, as you know, it's it's, we're on a four-year rotation, if you don't know that, that's something Andy and I had discussed a while ago, we turn the cars over about every four years, because that's, yeah.
Why, why, why not five? Why is it four? Because I think about our, my own, my, you know, my own, we have cars.
Yeah, well, it's hard to compare your car to the cars that we do, because then we.
You know, I try to make them last eight, ten years.
Oh, sure.
But, you know, it's like.
So four years, they're, yeah, they're.
Magic.
No, they're typically completely out of warranty, and that's just when things start to fall apart, um.
And.
Mileage.
Typically, when.
Oh, yeah.
Correctly, when you're looking to replace a car, there's some kind of big benchmarks in key points, you know, mileage points, and Daryl certainly knows. And so, right now that, I use the truck as an example, everyone likes the truck, the truck was purchased over two years ago, when it was in service, I think, July of twenty-two. Um, it's now got.
Seventy-two thousand miles.
So fleet use.
And so we think about the service life, the maintenance in with increased mileage is wear and tear, and then and you hit certain points in the car, the manufacturer says that at X number of miles, you gotta replace these, this and this. And so I think the big part of it is to try and keep those vehicles in good front-running condition uh for whatever period of time, and and probably more on average, we're looking at twenty thousand miles a year.
Yeah, it depends, yes, well, yes, when both vehicles get used, uh, uh, yes, equally, and the other problem we've had is the Explorer that we have has given us nothing but issues the entire time we've owned it, so it's spent a lot of time in the shop. Yeah, just so you know, and Daryl knows this, uh, if we lost a motor in any one of our vehicles right now, we had to replace the motor, we're right around twelve to fifteen thousand dollars now. So I only have seven thousand in in my budget line. So I only have seven thousand in in my budget line for vehicle maintenance. So we are always trying to think about where does that warranty run out? At what point is that vehicle going to start to cost us more to replace? And then what's that trade-in value? If we're if we're five years into that motor vehicle, if we traded it in at four years and I got, let's just say fifteen thousand as a trade-in. If I have to put a fifteen thousand dollar motor in it in year five. It's not going to be worth any more money. So basically, we've lost money in the end. So for me, the long-term plan is this, the long-term plan.
To hear of having to buy a car.
Yeah, yes, you're right, correct.
Well, I mean. We've, I think we've tried this before, extending it out a little bit longer, and it came back to bite us.
Well, and here's the word, and Josh is right. The worst problem we have right now is that we're small, and I know it seems. And when I say that we're trying to keep costs down, I know we have a large budget, but at the end of the day. We only have two cars that are frontline cars. A lot of other agencies have three or four frontline cars, one that just sits. And does nothing. So when a car goes down, we have another vehicle to take place. So we went ran into a situation to.
More than two vehicles, though.
We have a chief's car. We have, yes, my car that's not set up for everyday patrol. Mine is, mine's the one. That I get after the vehicles have been worn out and I run that back and forth. I'm not saying that to complain. I'm simply saying that I get the old one. I don't get a new car. Every four years.
And you do try to reuse, like we were talking about, what can be reused.
Oh, correct, from car to car.
The Explorer, that's now, you know, the second oldest vehicle we have. The, and so we're going to take as much out of that as we can and put it in the new vehicle, the electronics in particular. Um to lower that purchase price. And so by the time it gets that goes to be the third vehicle, the chief's vehicle. It that's what he's talking about. Doesn't have the things in it that your regular patrol is going to require radar details and most kinds of.
It's typically a light bar and a siren, which gets me to those calls at midnight or middle of the day. So, yeah, so we ran into a situation a couple of years ago that was very uncomfortable for us, where all of our vehicles were down. One got hit from behind on a traffic stop and the other one was broken. We were three weeks, we had to borrow a car from the sheriff's department. That's terrible, right? We had to borrow one of their.
They gave you their best card.
Hey, God bless him, though, because if not, here's what I would tell you. It depending on what that staffing level was at the time, we could have had an officer, two officers on for five hours. And if we didn't have a car, we have to pay them. So we don't have any coverage in the town. The sheriff's department is going to cover. We're paying somebody and we have no cars to put them on the road with. So. Having cars, when you're a smaller department, I know it seems a little more costly, but having a vehicle that's going to allow us to patrol. Right? That that extra year that we're talking about or or trading in every four years, when historically we haven't had to. Put a motor or transmission in anything. Yeah, doesn't mean that it can't happen. But the flip side is, is that even something as miniscule as doing brakes now on these new cars. You're fifteen hundred dollars, eighteen hundred dollars by the time you're done with brakes and rotors. I know that sounds small, but you get into that year five. They they are literally starting to fall apart.
Sounds like you've learned this from experiences. So this is the routine.
Well, this is part of a capital improvement program.
This is, you've already built in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
So you're just coming because the expense is going to be affected, so you're.
I've been nagging him to say it's it's the year, it's the year.
This is something, a program that's been going on for a while.
Yes.
Rotation, okay.
Yes.
I think historically, from what I've seen just on paper and the budgets, it's like, we anticipate the year it's going to happen and the money. Just gets funded in the reserve. And so what I've worked with Jason on is just trying to say, what is our schedule? And like, how do we create level funding amounts in the capital plan to make sure that when the year is anticipated, we've got the balance to do it? Which we do right now. I'm estimating eighty, just over eighty thousand dollars in the police vehicle reserve. So. It's not an unknown expense. It's not something that needs special. Or approval at town meeting, a special funding request at town meeting. And so. He's been good about being able to build that in and we're also looking at, you know, other equipment needs that were maybe not. And that's why we expanded the definition of the reserve from vehicle to just police reserve. Because you've got other things that, again, we'd wait till kind of we knew they were going to fail or hopefully they were going to fail. And then it was just that one year, you'd see these little blips.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to create that as a little level. And it's not just four years and it's done, right? It's four years. Is the plan. It's four years in frontline use, and then it becomes a year or two, depending on the cycle, um that the chief's still using it. So. Um it's just a lot less miles at that point that we're getting put on.
You don't get that heavy, you don't get the heavy use.
Yeah, right.
Well, I have a lot of experience picking police vehicles. But the the price difference on these things is a few thousand dollars one way or the other. And obviously, you know. Which vehicle is best for your, you know.
Yeah.
Department, and I would leave that to you.
Okay, and I I did break it down, just so you know, I I didn't put it in your list. I did it today in between rest warrants and but explorer equipped. This is not an exact number, but basically sixty-four. The F-one fifty is uh sixty-eight, six. This is with equipment. This is the vehicle equipped, bannered, ready to go out the door. Um the the Chevy pickup truck is sixty-nine, eight, and the Chevy Tahoe is sixty-eight, nine, ninety-one. Um my recommendation is, uh uh and I'd like to see us stick with uh a pickup truck. Because my staff love it and they're in it and they're driving it. They're comfortable. There's no blind spots. They seem to be holding up. Uh either, either the F-one fifty or the Silverado. I'm not picking, yeah. And and so listen, in here, I I I specifically put in here the pickup truck. Uh or the Chevy, the only reason I said the Chevy truck was because they had one in stock. And at the time that I wrote this up. There was one Ford F-one fifty coming in to Quirk and and it wasn't spoken for yet. So I will tell you that what happens is is once the twenty twenty-four model years are done, the shipment is done. They don't know when they're going to retool to build new ones. So we could literally be June of next year before we get a truck. Or car, whatever we choose as a team here um to pick. Uh I I personally would rather not have the Explorer. You folks are spending the money, the town taxpayers are spending the money. We've had nothing but issues. The sheriff's department has nothing but issues with theirs. They're just.
And I know we've done.
I I I've talked to Jason about this already, just had some questions. And I'd prefer to stick with the Ford since that's what we've been using, so.
Chevy's new to the market.
Chevy's new to the market, but they're still.
With a truck.
With a truck.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the Tahoe, yeah, I'm sure he he'd love to have a Tahoe.
Well.
Uh but I I think.
Does it have built-in TVs and DVD system?
I think I I just going by what we've done and I the the. The Explorer is off the table for me. Um it's and the Tahoe is out the window for me and it's coming down to the Ford and the Chevy and. Our fleet is Fords and. You know.
Yeah.
You you're okay with that?
Here's what I want to do. I want to have the same thing in the fleet, because here's what happens. When we start switching from SUVs to trucks, to SUVs to trucks. Nothing's reusable in them. I can't steal the electronics from here. I can't take the center console out. Ford, Chevy, all of them, they do this on purpose. They change their brand. They change their model lines every four or five years. And it totally screws us.
Yeah.
Because nothing will fit. So all this expensive seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars worth of equipment, we put in that truck. We can take the radio out.
The electronics are one.
The electronics.
Hard stuff, the.
To an extent, and what I did with our truck, this current F-one fifty is I went internal lights. Because they're not exposed to the elements. So when the time comes to trade that truck in, provided they didn't make the new F-one fifties physically wider. I'll be able to take that electronics out as long as they're still functioning and working appropriately and and parts are available. I can take those out. That's a two or three thousand dollar savings. I probably wouldn't reuse the siren box, because those are the things that go bad. After four or five years, but but just trying to figure out throughout my experience, the things that we can change out and when we start switching. From SUVs to trucks, we're not, we simply have to re-equip it from the ground up.
Right, so you're both on the same page with the Ford?
Yeah, I'm completely fine. The guys love the Ford. We've had great.
I'm with Tom. I I don't, I mean, I'm I'm an expert in police vehicles.
The trucks, I think historically have been, I mean, we we were with a Ram there years ago.
Sounds like a personal.
And it it seemed to be a much more versatile. I mean, you can throw cones in the back. You've got, I mean, there's a lot more. I mean, you can do that with a. Explorer, but it doesn't fit as well.
No, yeah, and.
I'm I'm partial to a truck and I think the same thing. We should, I think we should stick with the Ford package. Right now, we have some familiarity with it. I know you, yeah.
Well, and we know the price. Again, we're talking, you know, it's, I'm saying it's sixty-eight, six ninety-three, understanding that. I was told by my outfitter that the F-one fifty and the Chevy truck is right around seventeen thousand dollars. I couldn't get you an exact price because we haven't sat down to figure out every single thing. What he did is he took the invoices. From like trucks that he's done this year.
Some recently.
And he has said, this is how much these invoices were. I didn't get to look at the invoice and say, well, I don't need that fancy thing, but I need that fancy thing. I need it to work. Um it was about fourteen thousand dollars to equip our F-one fifty two years ago. I don't think, I I mean, we're going to be there plus by the time we put a tonneau cover and a bed slide and. Yeah, there's some changes we're going to make. One of the really important things that we have to do now is. That F-one fifty we have, we put what we call a half cage in the back, which means that half of the backseat is applicable. We can put our gear in it. The other half is for the for the person that we have to arrest. Here's what we found. If they want to get in on their own. They're happy. They'll jump right in there. We can get them in. No longer are the days where if they're fighting with us, kicking and screaming. We can't get to the other side of the truck to get them in the truck safely. We have to face them and people get hurt. Because they have to get in, and that's where Taser deployments become more realistic. OC spray becomes more realistic because we can't get them in the truck and they're kicking and screaming and biting. So we will not go with that again, that half cage. We will, which is cheaper.
Yeah.
But the seat belts, there's a new seat setup. I won't get into the details, but basically the other thing that we run into is law enforcement is when the current seat belts come. From the outside of the, you know, at the door, across their body and they buckle in the middle. It sucks reaching across somebody who's trying to bite you and headbutt you and spit on you. So they make this special seat now where the seatbelt starts in the middle. And it goes and hooks to the side of the cage on the door. So when you open the door. You get the person inside there and all you need to do is reach right here, push the button, take the seatbelt, buckle them in. They're legally buckled in. It's safe. We don't have to hurt them. They don't have to hurt us. You know, it's super safe. It's like.
I thought our, I thought our residents are a lot friendlier.
It's not our residents that we're dealing with.
The visitors.
It's the visitors that those, they come to our town to commit crime. But anyway, so so again, that, you know, don't.
Let me make a motion to to move ahead with the F-one fifty pickup truck.
Second.
Um what do we need roughly for a dollar amount?
Yeah, so I mean, I.
Up to.
We said up to seventy probably would give us sixty-eight, not six ninety-three.
Uh we have roughly eighty.
Oh.
I'm up to seventy makes sense, I guess.
Okay, so Dan's got a motion, uh Spanish is up to seventy. Oh, Tom seconded, okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Born and Andrew's absent, yeah.
Yeah, can I just step on a um third rail here?
Yeah, go.
And and you can, it's neither here nor there, but a couple of people have um asked me. A number of times over the last couple of years, is that they see that decal on the um on the truck and it's this Blue Lives Matter symbol.
Is it blue, or is it the thin blue line sticker? I say, because ours doesn't say Blue Lives Matter, yeah, okay.
Same thing.
Yeah.
And and so some people take offense to that.
Okay.
Because it um it it grew out of the Black Lives Matter movement. If you look at the history of it.
Well, right, yeah, I've done a lot of history on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so some people are offended by it and they and they want to know why the town is taking a. Um a position on a.
We support our police officers.
No, but what they perceive is is a as a political.
Actually, glad that they perceive that, and it's hard to change perception sometimes, right? So it likely, it likely wouldn't go on the next truck.
I'm I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, of course, yeah. We had one person talk to us about it, I think, at a meeting. Maybe a year or two ago, and we had a great discussion, you know. I wish they'd come in and talk to me, because I I got a pretty open door policy. I wish they'd come in and we could converse about it, but. Please, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
There there's a, there's at least amongst a few people.
Okay.
I'm not going to say too.
Could you send, could you send him in the chat with me just please? A smartphone, no, no, it's, but no, I I hear you for sure. Yeah, it's 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 been an issue in a lot of other towns, believe it or not. I mean, to the point where I think Wisconsin, I think Wisconsin removed theirs from their vehicles. So certainly a topic that I don't mind.
I just, I just, just as an aside, so.
Excellent. Um thank you, everybody, for that, for sure. Question I had for you is, um. So Andy and I talked about this, when the time comes, when the new vehicle is equipped and ready to go, can I get the board's permission to sell? The two two thousand seventeen Explorer. Um and here's what I'd ask. Generally speaking, we do a closed bid. You know, a closed bid thing where they send them in or whatever it is. I was actually contacted today while I was sitting here by the main vocational. Um law enforcement guru who teaches there, and he said, it just happened to be, he said, hey, to all the police chiefs. We're looking to buy a quote-unquote retired police cruiser for our program, for the criminal justice program in the high school. He said, would any of you be willing to sell it? I said, well, generally, I have to go through a bid process, so it's not favoritism, right? I said, but they're a school, nonprofit. Criminal justice organization. I threw out a number there that said traditionally what we see for these particular vehicles were between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars. Um is that in your price range? And he said, absolutely. And, you know, I said, I'll ask the board tonight if we could circumvent the closed bid process and be able to sell it to. The main vocational school criminal justice program. If you can. I don't know if we have that authorization. It literally just happened. I didn't mean to throw it at you. Again, I don't know. I don't know enough about what we have to do per the charter, if we have to put it out to bid. Or can a nonprofit. Type organization like that have the ability to buy it outright?
Yeah, it's not about the organization and who wants to buy it, but just about the process. And I think the, I think the board has the authority, but without the warrants in front of me, I can't remember exactly.
We have thirty some, we we can look into it.
Yeah. Would you at least consider looking into that?
And I know in the past that different non, you know, whether it be a law enforcement. At uh fire departments or ambulance services gone to the county.
Yeah.
And bought some of the old retired.
Well, I'm in no rush at all, and neither are they. It was just kind of one of those, it just happened to work great, and that program is specific to teaching. You know, high school kids who want to be cops, how to be cops. They do traffic stops in there and they do constitutional law and they do a fourth amendment and search and seizure and. All of these things, and it would be super cool. And the other great part is, is that they take it whole, meaning complete. Because we can't use anything on that car anymore. We we would take the radio out, because that's usable. Um they take the decals off. So we wouldn't have to pay that expense, or I wouldn't have to peel those off, and they could utilize the lights. We don't have to dispose of that stuff. Because generally, when we sell to the public, I have to, I I take all that stuff off, which is just a day's worth of labor. So if they're willing to do all that, it saves us some time, if if the charter allows or if the board allows that to happen. So if you guys would just consider that.
Have you sold others like this in the past?
I've sold them all to like a closed bid or.
Right, yeah, what was the highest bid?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
No brainer.
So also, it's, yeah, we'll just look into it, we can do it.
And I'd touch, probably touch base with them and just say, hey, we're looking in.
Yeah, sure. So I told him that I'd be no guarantees I could give him an answer tonight. He said, no, no, if at least you could ask. So, and he's a retired cop. From Bath PD that's teaching the program as the professor. Um excellent, thank you for that. If you can look into that. You have to do a motion or anything? I don't think so, right?
Not right now. Just need to find out.
Find out. I think I think we can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just double check it.
We wait for the procedure, but we'll find out when the time comes and we can make the appropriate motion then, so.
Uh real quick, wanted to hit while we're here, just trunk or treat was a huge success. Uh super bummed out. Maya's probably listening. I don't know if she is or not, but super bummed out because it really wasn't anything in the paper. I think there was some, it was two pictures in the paper. Maybe the miscommunication, the reporter is. Today, today was his last day and maybe things didn't, I don't know, I don't even care. But uh we saw, we sold, not sold. We gave away all the four hundred hot dogs in an hour and ten minutes. Uh we had two thousand.
You had hot dog?
Yeah, there was a giant sign over there.
Starving, I didn't.
Sorry, you shouldn't have went over you.
Have to wear a costume, Tom.
He did, he did. Um so anyway, uh fantastic turnout. Everything was great. Huge, I would argue, probably the biggest of the year. Two thousand dollar candy donation, all but three boxes went away. There were children there, my understanding.
Huge crowd.
Yeah, and they were kids from um uh Thomas and Rockland. A lot of kids. It was great. So just wanted to say it was, it was awesome. Um I will tell you that our process or our thought process next year is that we've grown to the point where maybe we might ask the board. And to utilize the municipal parking lot downtown for next year's event and maybe do a five to seven. To allow those kids and everybody, like maybe half the lot, we set up for trunk or treat. The other half could be for parking. And then those same kids that are down there parking, the parents could still do some shopping, the businesses can get involved in the trunk or treat. Right? And then the kids can go to Glidden Street, Pump Street, and we kind of got a centralized location.
More of an event.
It's, yeah, we're not, I'm not asking for anything. I'm simply saying that we're trying to brainstorm a better way, because we had forty-something trunks. So it was pretty cool.
Sounds like a chief wants to head an entire Halloween event down town.
I'm in. I'm in, I'm in, let's do it.
Just eclipse pumpkin fest.
No, it won't if I'm running it.
A lot of the kids go up Pump Street and Glidden Street, and they were all over downtown nine o'clock that day.
Yeah, my donor, my donor this year said, what do you need? Five thousand dollars? So I'm like, no, we don't think we can do with, you know, but every year it grows. Like next year, we need six hundred hot dogs and it's all donation. It's all free. Everybody donates their time for it, so it's.
Yeah, we had at least a hundred and fifty come to our house. Yeah, we had at least a hundred and fifty come to our house.
Oh, it was crazy, oh my gosh.
Less than four years, but it's still.
Still off.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so the last thing Andy wanted me to touch on, off the topic of, uh, trucks and cars and all that is that, um, maybe you've heard in the community, maybe you haven't, but, uh. As we all know, there's some issues in the judicial system and there's some breaks and, and from the, from when the. Case gets charged originally until the jail time, there's just not a lot happening there. Um, I'm, I don't want to speak about who's at fault for that, but one of the things that I decided, I was invited to be a guest speaker at the Finding Our Voices, which is an organization. That does domestic violence against women and, uh, probably the scariest. Scariest place I've ever been in my life because it was, um, probably a hundred females that were there that were, uh, abused. And, uh, and I'm the only male there and there was a lot of animosity towards law enforcement because. These, these, these perpetrators are being arrested and then they're not going to jail and they're being released and let go. And unfortunately, because of the way our judicial system is kind of set up, it's not real transparent what happens after the police make the arrest. And because of that, it's very easy to blame the law enforcement agency, cause they're the only ones that you get to physically see and talk to. And, and you know, what, what could be somebody's the worst absolute time in their life, a survivor has to do it, no, so anyway. So I go there, I, I, I think about running because I was scared, because I thought for sure they were gonna probably take me out there on the stand, but. One of the things I spoke about was just that, I, I agree, our system is broken and I've been the only vocal. Real vocal police chief, not that they don't all feel that way, but I just tend to not have a filter sometimes, so. I'm setting up a four-part series and this four-part series, so I'm the district six police chief, so I represent the chiefs. In Lincoln Sagatah, um, Knox. And, uh, Lincoln Counties. Because of that, my relationship i- is, um, is multifaceted, so I get to hear from these other areas and see what does your prosecution look like? What is that, what is happening over there? And so I, I've, I've, I have said. Our biggest downfall in law enforcement is that we don't educate the public about what we do. We do all these wonderful things, I, I suspect most everybody in the board doesn't know all the things. That we do even in, in your community, not because you don't care, but because I don't have time, right, to, to tell you all of the hundreds of things and the people that we help. Every single day, so I said, we need to do a community meeting. About transparency in our ju- justice system and I'm heading this up, so. I've got a, uh, I've got a lesson plan, I'm, we're gonna do it in Damascata, we're gonna do it in Wascasset, we're gonna do it in Boothby Harbor and we're gonna do it in Walderboro. I'm working with these chiefs. As the district six rep, it's not gonna be a, uh, cost to, to our tax base here, I'm doing it, you know, uh, at, in the evenings when we're done. And essentially all this is gonna be is a, this is what you're reading in the paper. This is the definition of a conviction, a deferred disposition, bail conditions. All, all the things that you read in the newspaper and you go, I don't even know what that means, but how can that person be charged with this? And, and what does a deferred disposition mean? Is that a conviction? In no way, shape or form is this an opportunity to slam any elected official or any judges or anything. I simply. Want to paint a picture, an honest, true picture to our taxpayers, especially in my community, but abroad. So they can form their own real educated. Opinion of where is the break in the system, right? I want to say, this is what my officer does from here until the time it makes it to the court. This is it, this is what we do, from start to finish, it's, it's, it's transparent, it's my policies. You can look at my body camera footage, I, and then from here to here, which is the judicial system, from they get the case. To the time where a judge makes that decision or prosecutor does, whatever that may be. And then over here is the jail, well, the jails. About as transparent as you're gonna get, cause they've already been sentenced. Generally, when they've been, when they've been sent to a, uh, an incarceration for, for a, a punitive side of it, that is the outcome of this. Part here, that there is, it's not transparent. Where it's a lot of moving parts and it's an elected position. And what's happening is, is there's a lot of decisions that are being made in this part here, that there's no accountability at that level. Because you can't go in and ask those questions, cause they can't tell you, because it's a court process, right? And they don't have to discuss or make. Any changes in policy-driven changes that they make, they don't have to discuss with anybody. They can just say, like, thinking off the cuff, we don't want to prosecute first-time thefts anymore. If they've never been in trouble before and you bring us a theft case, we're not prosecuting it anymore. End of story, you can do all you want as law enforcement, but we're gonna let them go and what happens?
San Francisco.
Well, it, I, I'll tell you, there's some similarities to a lot of places that now have, um, uh, unhoused abroad. Businesses that are shutting down and, and economic disparity because of the lack of accountability, so again. I want to do this because I feel like we owe it to everybody in our community, so.
Come to this idea while you were in the meeting or after you?
No, this was, this was actually something that I was thinking about doing to start with and I, I got traction when I stood up there and I was like, you're all right. I can't stand up and tell you that we're perfect, because we're not perfect, we're human beings. That are tasked with something that nobody else wants to do in this world. Right? We're the, we're this kind of the silly, silly, not great, smart ones that run towards the gunfire, but you're all right. How do I fix this? And I can't fix it alone, trust me, I've had these meetings with the people that I'm supposed to have meetings with and I've been the one that goes like this. And great, and we get told things are gonna change and they don't. And, and I'm one person, right, but I'll tell you this, when the community comes together, the taxpayers, the voters, the important people in our communities that, that have a say. Things can change, but how do they change things when they simply don't know? I can tell you right now that if any of you asked a current prosecutor, probably in any district in the state, not just ours. What is your conviction rate look like? They will tell you that it's astronomically high. I can tell you that I do fifty thousand calls for service a year, if I took a call number for every single time I spoke to one of you folks on the street. And you had a question about an event and I took a call number for community policing, I don't do that, but I could do that and I could tell you. I need four more officers because my numbers are way up here. I don't do that because it's false advertising, but when you go to any prosecutor and say, what's your conviction rate, they can say ninety, ninety-five percent. And you're gonna believe them, why wouldn't you? But the problem being is that when that, you don't know what the original charge was, right? And please understand, I'm not crapping on anybody. I'm simply saying that if I charged somebody with a violent domestic assault with strangulation and they pled out to a hunting without orange. On a deferred disposition, they got a conviction.
They were convicted.
On a charge, so conviction rates are high.
And not during, but with your, y- y- your recent meeting with the, these victims, I'm gathering from this discussion that. Uh, a, a, a lot of their frustrations were they, you know, they're. There was an arrest made and there might have been a, a, a secondary incident or something like, why does this person, they got back out again? Or they were, you know, there was an assault and, and they, they, they were let out for a misdemeanor or something and then here they, and they probably repeat. A lot of repeat issues, I'm gathering.
Oh, well, so.
Domestic violence.
Bail conditions, I, and I, I, I used the, I used the domestic violence. As a small example, and not that that's small in nature, it's just that is one small part of what we deal with every day in our jobs, right? Domestic violence is. Is, is violent, that's why it's called domestic violence, right? It has long-lasting things, but here's the problem. We have a system right now where we make the arrest, they can't prevent me from making an arrest. My staff, we still make arrests. What happens is, is that person goes, goes to jail where we bring them and then they get out on what we call a bail system. And that bail can, that bail system is designed to let people out on a particular set of bail conditions, whatever that may be. It could range from you can't drive back through Damascata to, you, you can't drink to excess or you can't have contact, whatever it may be. We have people currently in our town right now are some residents with eleven sets of bail conditions. That means that after they were arrested the very first time.
They violated.
They have been arrested eleven more times and they're still allowed to be out on the street and then they, when that person. Does harm somebody else, if it's alcohol related or violent related. Where's the accountability? I, I'm, I'm asking that, right? Not, not to slam anybody in the judicial system at a hall. Where is it? Cause our job stops with the charge, we're not punitive. Right? We are, we are stopped, essentially stopped the bleed, we go in, we do what we need to do, we deal with the dangerous situation, we make the arrest, we do our follow-ups. We give all these resources out, we try to help people, but at the end of the day. The accountability comes after we arrest them, we hold them accountable that night. For what we can hold them accountable for, so, so again, all I care about is, is getting the public educated. And only educated, there will be absolutely no. Slurring any particular part of the judicial system, they'll, they'll be asked to leave if they do, it's.
They'll make their own deductions.
They have to, they have to, that's how we get taught, right? You don't know anything about cars, you want me to come in and tell you about the cars, what do we want, what's the best thing for it? We, I should be doing more of this to the community, I simply don't have time. And I wish I could do these every single month on every single topic, it just doesn't work out that way. But what a great opportunity right now to be able to at least educate.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so just be aware that if you see this in the newspaper, this is not a stone-throwing. We're not throwing stones at anybody, we're trying, I am simply trying to educate the community about how the system works from start to finish.
So it's not law and order, we just watched our law and order.
It will not go.
Conviction done, jail, boom.
It will not, it will not be, so.
But that's part of the issue, you know, the, the perception too, is there's, you know, you see media and whatnot, there's a lot of show, you know, like that and it seems so quick and simple, like. Boy, they just got arrested, oh, they went to jail, why are they getting back out again?
You can see the diagram now with all the little steps all outlined.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, it works so quickly in the shows though.
CSI Miami, I'm telling you, I wish it worked like that.
Yeah.
Again, I, I, I have learned a long time ago that I refuse to be part of the problem, complaining is part of the problem. Being a solution, trying to be part of the solution and do it respectfully, I don't want to get in any type of a fight with any part of the judicial system. I just want us all to work together and I need accountability to come back, because. Things have changed and, and how our job is and things have changed and how we're treated on the street and, uh. I'd just like to see that maybe go back the other way, I don't think everybody should go to jail, but I think there needs to be accountability. At some level here and it seems like it's going backwards, so why not try to get it back to that middle ground? I don't need it to go either way, so, if, but if, and if you see that, please come. You're gonna learn a lot about that and ask questions and tell your friends.
You already have dates for this?
No, yeah, I should, I'm meeting next week with one of the other chiefs who's.
Keep us finalized.
Let us know, yeah.
Shoot you an email, so.
Yeah, schedule it, awesome.
Cool, all right, I know you all want to get home, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cool.
Good job.
We have more, if you want to stay. Awesome. All right, let's bounce back, uh, official action items here, folks, we've got some cemetery stuff to. Take care of, Patty ran out, she was smart, she got out of here.
She was really smart.
Be here for that.
Ask the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The time, is there any, any reason not to just to move them all?
I just.
I was, I was gonna say, I think, yeah, I think we can move the, we can move the deeds.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah.
All right, I'll move all of them.
I think what we hear Dan say is gonna move the cemetery deeds and.
Per- perpetual.
And the cemetery perpetual care maintenance contracts as presented, that good?
That's good.
All right.
No, no, let's not do that.
No, 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 all right, so Dan's made a motion, I had a second. Tom seconds, okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Make sure we sign them.
Boom, yeah, yeah, actually I'll pass this down to Josh.
Sure, get signed on that, so.
Okay. All right, oh, that's done, that's done, uh, ARPA funds. All right, Andy. It's after the place, yeah, get moving around a little bit there. I keep losing my track, fifty-eight?
Yeah.
Awesome, fifty-eight, boom.
Yeah. Uh, sharing with you the proposal I submitted to the county, um. We had originally submitted it, you might, may recall, um, just mimicking the D E C D, but we did get that. We haven't signed a contract yet, but, um, we were awarded that, and, and so the county offered us an opportunity, so well. If you still have the money and if you still want to work towards housing, what is it you want to work towards? Um, and so I, I. Put this together, um, just based on, you know, kind of things in the comp plan, things we've talked about, what's kind of impediments to. Seeing development happen in town, um, water and sewer, um, locations is a big one. Um, and so I, you know, made a reach, uh, far bigger than what the initial request was, to try and see if we could get some lunar engineering. That said, um, I did get a call today, uh, from Emily, um, at the, at the county and. Uh, they had, she had a quick discussion with Carrie, um. It still needs to go through the commissioners, um, it's just, there's not enough funding to do all of what we've just asked for, um, but there. Um, it sounds like, um, it's very likely we would get the money we asked for for the workforce housing design.
Okay.
Um, and then there, you know, there, I think, sounded like they might try and word it in a way that would allow some. Water and sewer design work, if, if say this parcel we were gonna look into more closely was in an area that didn't, wasn't mapped by it. And so it wouldn't take away from.
Right.
The money for looking at that piece, um. And so I don't have the dollar value, but if the board's in agreement and is okay with this proposal, um, and kind of how it might be modified. If it gets pared back, um, I'm just kind of looking for something that I can provide to the commissioners as they review it. The plan is that they would review and potentially sign the contract with us on the twentieth, when they meet, we meet, or on the nineteenth, we meet the day after. Um, and so they said they could sign it ahead of us as long as they knew the select board was okay with.
You know, why not?
Yeah.
For workforce housing, sure.
Yeah.
You need a motion?
I think, yeah, that might be helpful, um, just a motion to. I'll make a motion to, uh, to accept the ARPA funds, whatever they give us, so.
Yeah.
All right, I think Josh seconded that one, yeah, we're all getting loopy here.
Getting up at two o'clock in the morning and not going back to city.
Yeah, cause you mentioned something, we might not get all of it, so.
Right.
Whatever they give us, we'll make.
Sounds like a plan, all right, um, any other discussion? All those in favor? Good there, awesome. All right, M dot.
Uh, we were awarded the, um, uh, yeah, the part, planning partnership initiative, that's to work with the state on business route one.
Yeah.
Uh, from intersection of church near Bristol, not including the intersection at Bristol and the light, but. Just above that, all the way up to Instigun, and they've been doing the survey work, uh, to look at drainage locations and basins and. Do all of that assessment, um, already, um, so we basically pick up from there. Um, put out an RFP to hire an engineer to come in and work with us on conceptual designing, what the community would like to see through that stretch. Um, and then, so the, the state would pay for seventy-five, up to seventy-five thousand, we'd be paying for up to seventy-five thousand. Anything that goes beyond that, we're gonna have to talk with them about amendments of sorts, so. Um, they're at a point where they're looking for the town to sign the contract. If the board's, uh, uh, ready to proceed with that, if you wanted to authorize me to sign on your behalf. And I can get this sent back to them and we can try and get an RFP out soon.
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize the, uh, Andy Door Town Manager to sign this contract for M dot. Um, planning study grant agreement and move forward.
A second.
Tom seconds, any other discussion? Eric, none, all those in favor? Two, three, four, all right, sounds good, twenty minutes, right? Flood wall, all right.
I got secure.
Yeah.
I know, it's fun stuff.
All right, yes.
Um, so the, the flood wall, we've talked about this a little bit now, the, um, there were. Three companies we kind of zeroed in on, uh, one of them was not able to, um. Close the gap on having a meeting, I reached out a couple of times and we just couldn't get that, that was the flood defense box wall, that was the cheapest solution presented. Um, a rigid plastic kind of click together, uh, three foot wide pieces and eight hundred and fifty feet to lay out. Um, the other two, the mega secure Watergate and the Geo Design P forty, we did have in, had recorded. Uh, I know some of you had a chance to review that, Dan attended both of those meetings, um. And both offer very different. Um, similar height in terms of like flood defense, um, but just very different designs. Um, the mega secures advantage is it seems really quick to.
It's like, it's like laying, laying fire hose.
Yeah, basically, yeah, and the water itself creates.
Creates the wall.
Yeah, yeah.
You dive over it.
Yeah, you could, yeah. As the water has receded, yes. Yeah, the, the Geo Design, I know, I was, I was certainly, um, surprised to learn about, just like. There's maintenance and right now, what does it mean when you buy infrastructure, what's the maintenance cost, what are we buying into? Um, with the, with the Geo Design, uh, system, there's this poly membrane that lays over the steel plates. And it kind of extends forward into like where the water would be, um, and. You don't have to do it every time, but, you know, they said some people who buy these do replace the poly every time and I think that was about a three thousand dollar expense is what I estimated.
Right.
Um, yeah, and so it's another piece to just realize and, and think about, um, they do. Get installed and laid out in three foot wide pieces, those are, I think, fifty-five pounds a piece.
Yeah, they're really heavy.
Um, you know, so it's. Lot of hands to make that happen quickly, whereas the mega secure, it's in a custom-built crate, two hundred feet, uh. Three k- three crates at two hundred feet, one at two fifty and we can hook on with the, with the machine we have and, and let her rip, um. You, you, you have three points where you gotta Velcro together, that's it, um.
Everything looks good to me on that and the only curiosity is the one-year defect materials and that's. You said you were gonna contact a couple of people that use it and see what they say.
Uh, I mean.
Other than the fact that we're probably not gonna do this more than once a year, if, if we do it at all, but. Still, it's still curious that they're different than the others in that regard, five years, one year, three years. I don't know if there's any reason for that, you know, it's hopefully the experience. He just mentioned the one year when he, in his discussion. But he didn't really say why, but.
Right.
I, no, again, if you talk to other people, they've been around five years and, you know, it's non-issues.
Yeah, I mean, another nice thing is it, it is repairable, um, you know, it's things that we can do, um. I think minimally in the field, um, to get by, um, but then if like you got us, you can send a section back to them and they can repair it. Some of the other ones, you just have to replace the pieces.
Not, yeah, just, everything else seems obvious, that's the best choice, I'm just saying, you know, what do other people say about that? I mean, it stands out as the best, clearly, the other.
Yeah, it's used to have that.
The other categories.
Can you go on the mega secure?
Yeah.
Our process would, you know, if the board, you know, once you make your recommendation or authorize us to purchase one of these. We then basically request, you know, send that to E D A, your recommendation and purchase this. They would approve it. You know, once they approve. That we then sign the contract with the company, um, and are able to just proceed. Um, the turnaround time for both of those products was relatively quick.
Yep.
Um, so.
So I, I guess the, the other. Part is, is when you do submit it to E D A, if we choose mega secure that. That the forks for the loader or whatever, the extended forks are in that, and. We talked about whether a trailer or, uh, uh, some type of structure to. You know, store these crates in.
Get it moved, yeah.
If we close trailer.
Enclose.
Move them on site.
Or some, something that to that effect. So at least we'd have something to house them, whether it be a steel container or.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, the crates themselves are relatively sturdy, but it would be nice to have the added benefit of, so they don't break down, putting them in another building. Um. I, they did send me back a picture. It does look like, I was talking to Josh earlier, it does look like, um. My foreman was asking, can we pick up the crate from either end, the long end or the short end? Um, it does look like it is set up to be able to do that. Um, the difference being how do we put it on our trailer? We do have a, a pretty good sized trailer that would transport all four boxes. Um, but how you stack them on there, depending on its length, would ma- make a difference in how you approach the. To load it. So we would have that flexibility to load them, you know, in either direction, bring them up from either side. So. We would have to buy some, um. Eight foot forks. We have, I think, four foot ones right now, uh, but those boxes are eight feet long. Um, I, I was a little concerned about the weight. They did say, I think the two hundred foot section was sixteen hundred something pounds and then the. Two fifty is about eighteen hundred something pounds. The machine can lift that.
Right.
Um, and you're not gonna be that high off the ground anyway, so it's not like it's.
All you're trying to do is just kind of keep it. You know.
Right.
That far off the.
Yep.
Surface and you're laying it down like a hose, so.
Lifting it up or something.
Right.
The, the other one, that's the steel plated one, that one, those crates are too heavy for.
Yeah.
I'd argue it's three thousand.
Three thousand pounds, yeah.
That's pushing it on the whacker, what it, what it wants to lift.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially as you get. Reach high.
So these guys gave you actual names and phone numbers and like. This Gulf Coast storm protection, sounds like they probably has some real life experience down there. In Texas, um. Have you made a call to any of them? Is there any problem? I gotta call them?
Just time. I have, I can do that. I know I was leaning more towards calling any of them. It would be the ones in the more the northern part of the country and just in terms of. Our weather conditions, but nonetheless, they're probably using, utilizing them potentially more frequently.
Yeah.
Um, down there.
You do one, one of each.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's worth doing that due diligence, that's all.
Again, it's, it's always worth talking to somebody who's using it.
So, you know, if we can have something to store these in and. Have them. You know. We gotta have something to house it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, from what we budgeted, we had estimated a hundred and seventy-five for, uh, a flood wall when we sent our revised scope of work to the. E D A. Um, so the purchase price of the wall itself is a little bit less than that. So we would have the ability financially to be able, if they allow it, to. Buy those other pieces. Um, I think the forks we can absolutely make a case for. The conditions and what we have for buildings, I hope to make a case for a, a container. The containers aren't that expensive.
No, I mean, you buy one of the containers and we'll just put it in.
Yeah, you could talk in five.
Five to seven.
Grand delivered.
Right, yeah.
Um, so that's not too bad. And I mean, I'd prefer the ones that have the. Doors on the long side.
Correct.
Just so that we're not gonna be able to drive a whacker probably into that very far, but if you can approach it from the, from the sun, from the long.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. What do you need moving forward here?
Um, I mean, if, if the board's comfortable, uh, recommend, authorizing a purchase of this, it may be pending E D A's approval. Um, you know, if you're ready for that. If not, I mean, you can follow back up with the. Um, following up with phone calls from. Folks on that list before you decide. Um, it's up to you. But the.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt to make a call. Um, I mean, we could do.
Just a motion.
Satisfaction. Add that into the motion, you know, something. I mean, I, I think the folks have seen the.
Yeah.
The, the videos and whatnot.
Barring any, uh.
Yeah.
Concerning information from the due diligence calls, uh, we've got approved. Going forward with the, uh, purchase authorization, subject to E D A approval.
That sound like a motion right there.
I made a motion.
Awesome.
Yeah. For the mega secure.
For the mega secure.
Secure.
You gotta say it like that, though. Mega secure. Yeah, all right. Tom's got a motion out there. Who wants to second that one?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that topic? Nope. Good. All, all those in favor? Okay, two, three, four. All right, there we go. And subcontractor, we've got a tractor now. Equipment, equipment, equipment. Hmm, so, um. Yeah. We know the, uh, kind of the ins and outs here.
Public Works Director Expert down at the end here can tell us a little bit.
We're leaning towards a John Deere, ten twenty-five R, are we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm, the warranties are pretty well the same between the Kubota and the deer. Um, both have two-year, two-thousand hour, um. Bumper to bumper and six-year powertrain. Um. There's options to extend those warranties, um, in, in the. John Deere documents, residential warranty. Um. We can go to commercial and get bumper to bumper. Um, he said if it was seventy-two, it ranges depending how many months you want, but. As I said, well, give me the high end, seventy-two months, bumper to bumper, five thousand hours, it'd be thirty-eight ninety-one. Um, if you wanted to add that additional warranty coverage there. Um, the four-year warranty with Kubota was three thou-, um, three thousand hours was eleven hundred dollars. Um, so. I'm assuming deer, they tend to be kind of. Pretty comparable. And if you want the extended warranty, those prices are probably pretty similar.
I know even less about subcompact tractors than I do about police cars, so. What does Public Works say about?
Well, we have Matt, but I've looked over and we've, this is not the first time we've specked out tractors for the town. As we've done this prior with in bottom John Deere. Before too as well, so. Prior to the whacker. Um. So. It's.
I think one advantage the deer has over the Kubota, to me Bobcats just out of the question because they don't offer. It's not even specked out to have the same things. Um, the difference between the Kubota and the deer, one's a straight blade, one's a V blade. Um, and then the only other big, um, thing I saw in that was, uh, the deer will be set up with this price to. Um, accept the skid steer attachments we own. I mean, not that it can run all of them, but it could pick up the forks. Um, you could use the boom lift if you. Look at something really light. Um, and so it's a little more extroversal in that regard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like capability, so. It is, yeah.
Yeah. And if something might break, there might be somebody in town that might have something that would.
Yeah.
Adapt to this.
Yeah.
It's a little more.
Hey, lick your hand over there, by the way.
I think it's a little.
Way more.
It's not quite as long as the, the other one.
No.
Kubota, um, which will be, just be that much more helpful. Um, it, it's. The width is an extra two inches, but it's still under forty-eight or right at forty-eight, so, um, it's, it's no wider than what we utilize now. Um.
And we can, we can get on the church street sidewalk, so that's a lot easier than the whacker. And why everything is expanding. You know.
Yeah. Yeah, makes sense. Makes sense to me.
So the options.
Josh.
The options with this, I was asking, you know, what's the big difference between a cash price and a, in a financed price? Um, there really is no. Additional discount or, or saving. Sometimes a law for fifteen hundred bucks extra if you, if you pay cash kind of thing or buy upfront and don't finance. So. Um, you can see there, it's the same. The finance terms are, um, a bit longer with the deer, eighty-four months versus forty-eight months. Um, so it'd make your annual payment about sixty-three hundred dollars without the extra warranty. Um, versus eleven-five, eleven-six for the, the Kubota. Um. I would recommend, even though we have the cash balance in the reserve, I would recommend, um, especially, you know, given the. Update we got last, this past week on the, on the whacker, um, that seriously consider the financed option at zero percent. Um, just to kind of create a, a level. Payment over a period of time, so we have some flexibility depending on what you want to do with the whacker once we get a full assessment. Um, whether it's a. A sizable repair bill or whether it's a purchase of something else.
You can always pay it off.
You can.
Makes sense. So we do the least own, at least, yeah. So, so, all right.
We need a complicated motion here.
Well, um, I will, uh, make a motion to purchase a John Deere ten twenty-five R as quoted with least own option. And authorize the expenditure from the highway equipment reserve for the first year's payment.
Yeah. No, you second. No, you second. You took it.
Second, second. Dan's gonna, I'm giving it to Dan. Dan, you guys should argue all night. You're second. Dan's got the second. All those in favor? Yeah. All right, I assume there's no more discussion. All right. Cool. Um, so let's bounce down. We've got a few things to get through on, but, uh, discussion items. Using my voice here.
We still haven't done the town manager's report, you know.
No, we haven't done that one. We skipped over.
If you can, if you can read, you can.
Yeah, we get through the, uh. All right, Andy. So, um, yeah, Cross Street and Water Street, um, uh, paving and drainage, um.
Yeah, so the. The, you know, what they've exposed and pulled up on the asphalt around where the, all those basins went in.
Yeah.
Uh, they went back to Cross Street and, and grabbed that cut line there. And then they. Took it just past, um. The part, entrance to the parking lot on Water Street to the basins they replaced there. And so. I'm looking at the rest of Water Street back to Main Street and then. Everything's gonna be right there. We have the unit cost for asphalt, it's not gonna be buco bucks. Um, do we want to just simply have them, well. It's not simply, but do we want to have them apply an overlay to the rest of Water Street going to Main Street? Not the other way, not Cross Street right now, but, um, just to cover the rest of that. Um, and I'm, and I say that because I can, I think it can buy us, the road's in good condition still. And I think if we put that overlay on there, we're not gonna have to come back into there.
Oh.
Yeah, already there.
Eight years anyways, probably. You know, if, if that, that road had started to crack and needed to be reclaimed, I wouldn't say do it, but it's, it's in pretty good shape right there. The only. Thing we're looking at is there's one structure, and as long as that. Is in good condition. And we'll get us reasonably eight more years out of it. I'd say let's do it. Um, if it looks like. It's crumbling, it's failing, we gotta replace it, then it's kind of a different ballgame. We gotta consider that too if we want to do it. Um. The curbing, um, I say slightly complicated. We want to make sure there's at least a six inch reveal on that curb. Um, as it gets closer to Main Street, it goes down to about five and a half inches right now. So if you add another inch on top of that.
Right, yeah.
Um, but we're gonna have to have some grinding and just wire the prices up a little bit higher than just the unit price of asphalt. Um, but. They felt, you know. With what we're looking at, um. I think it was six thousand dollars in, in asphalt for the overlay.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm suggesting that we think about, you know, if we had had, if we used up ten grand from our paving reserve, that should cover the additional cost of labor to do the butt joints and. Kind of grind down along that curb line to make sure we get a six inch minimum reveal.
Let's do it. Fair enough. Yep. I'll make a motion and authorize the town manager to negotiate paving and overlay and other improvements as discussed on Water Street, Cross Street with quicker construction. And I'll authorize the expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars from the paving reserve for Water Street and Cross Street improvements.
I'll second.
I'll second. Same discussion? None? All those in favor? Right. Keys Woods. Only Mo is another one.
This one's a little more complicated. Um, not expecting any decision on this other than, do you, you know, and understand if the board is, whether you want to. Pursue it while there's a company there. The sanitary district is running water lines out Mid Coast Road and Keen Woods. Um, I was thinking only Keen Woods, but we know Mid Coast Road, if you haven't been on it, it's also in bad shape.
Yeah.
Um, I think there's some issues with, um, going back to when they. Changed the layout of the road there. Um, that transition a couple of years ago, I know the plows had pulled up a heck of a lot of asphalt there. It's a, just a steep transition to try and get up to that grade in a quick and short period of time. And so I don't, it's. Kind of a slightly different issue, but I know talking to Bill, uh, Morgan, or he was, as he sees it and going there every day, um, he was like, I, you know, he got. The old road bed, the new road bed, just the compaction's different. He's like, I think it's sliding. Um, so it, it potentially a bigger deal. That. The condition of both of those roads are not one that you just put an overlay on. Um.
So it's pretty hard shape.
Keen Woods to me is, you know, a little bit different, um. In what they're gonna do out there. And I did talk to Randy, um, and get his perspective on it. You know, trying to talk with Scott to see what, what are they looking at, at a cost for trench paving? Um, and because of the time of year, they're gonna be doing it. They're not likely gonna put asphalt in it. So they're gonna have to put something in, probably reclaim, pack it in and maintain that all winter as plowing happens. Um, the plow operator's gotta. Hope they don't catch the edge of the asphalt. If they do, eventually when they pave the trench in. You look at the condition of the road, I'm like, what are they paving? Why are we making them do that? And I don't know how this will, how you feel about this, and I'm sure the residents will feel a certain way, but we. Have an option perhaps to reclaim the road and maintain it as a gravel road through the winter, if you feel that we'd be in a position to try and pave it. In the spring. I'm worried about it, just given the cost of it and what we have available. Um.
It already has asphalt on it.
It's in very bad.
I know, I wrote it today.
Yeah.
It's, it's. One problem with it is too narrow. Should be a one-way street. You, you, I don't know how. U P S truck and any other vehicle could go by each other.
Sorry. But.
No.
Pull over a little bit. Um.
Killed us.
So trying to work with Scott to see is there a way, and because of how their fu- the project's funded on, on his end, I don't, we gotta kind of be tactful if we were to do this, but. You know, would there be a way for him to forego the asphalt cost if he could pay for the reclaiming?
Correct.
And then the whole surface is gravel for the winter time. The contractor doesn't have to worry about chasing that and coming back. The residents don't have to worry about. You know, hitting those lips. Um, we've got some significant drainage things to look at in there. Um, culverts to replace all those all need to be, even the one we put in two years ago needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
It's not deep enough, unless you raise the road. And get the cover. Um, but. Fortunately, that whole subdivision, um, is at a point now where the drainage isn't functioning. You got standing water.
But where do you drain it to?
Well, I think we'd have to go through and get drainage easements. Um, it all slopes out back and there's a creek out back. Um, and so you'd have to get drainage easements laid out and ditch it.
Yeah.
Can flow.
Cross property.
Either you raise your road in places to get the elevation you need and the grade you need to, to slope it to. Let it run, um, or you dig ditches. Um, it'd be a combination of both probably in some places. When you come into that. Circle and turn to the right, that. Culvert there. Um, might have four inches of cover on it. Um, and you, I mean, that should be a foot and a half, at least in the ground. Um. And it's, they couldn't, our guys couldn't drop that a foot and a half in the ground because now you're talking a four-foot ditch there. And it's gonna be well below you. Well, well below. I mean, and they'd have to. Dig a, you know, six-foot deep ditch going across the center of that. So it, we weren't in a position to be able to do what we needed there and it. It's at a point now, because of this work, do we want to try and bump this project up? Um, you know, we could try and piece it together where some, we could use our paving money, reserve money. In the balance this fiscal year, raising, knowing we're gonna raise money next year to say, okay, what, where can we get this year to feel comfortable, not co- you know, overconfident that the voters will just simply approve it? Feel good about what would, what might be left for the summer. Um, we do have the bond money. Um, that we were authorized to use for roads and sidewalks generally. Um. Knowing that that was primarily earmarked for the rest of Church Street. Um, but, you know, so we do have a. You have a few things you can utilize to be able to pay for this, um, as long as we keep funding our road reserve. Um, but I think it's just.
Are there any town roads that are just dirt roads? Cause.
Peter Road.
Peter Road.
The first thousand feet of Peter Road, yeah.
We just got a hundred and ninety-six yards of gravel on it.
Cause it's not a high, it's not a. Heavily used road, Keen Woods.
It is not.
I would think reclaimed gravel be smoother and, and more.[1655.91] I think it would be.
I think it would be. Oh my gosh, I don't know how they, I mean, in this current condition, plowing it, it it's it's probably worse to plow it now than it would be if it was reclaimed and gravel. And then our guys are chasing that all winter as that asphalt comes up and trying to put coal patch out, and it's like, what are we patching? I mean, other, it's still could be a problem for the residents, for the plow operators. But. We come to a point where this section of that road, you're just, it's just not worth even trying to patch, um, right, but there are defects that we were obligated to do something with.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's where the reclaim, if you can take that asphalt that's there, like we do with Bell Padir Road. Fold it in 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 that base, stiffen that up and and have a good base there.
Yeah.
And it just means there's going to be a period of time where it'll be gravel and. You know, we can shave gravel. A lot better than we can patch.
Yeah.
That's there.
But it's a, it's a, it's a low speed, it's a low use, yeah, you're not, it's not a fifty mile an hour road, forty five mile an hour road. Um, it's a, it's a residential, I think a lot of folks are surprised to know that it's a town road, you know, it's it looks like it's a.
Yeah.
No, it's a, it's a development.
And when you go to grind it. And reclaim it, there's probably not much material there to.
Oh, I'd be shocked if more than two and a half inches.
Don't be a lot there.
There, yeah.
Um, yeah, so.
Might be out of fabric.
That was pre-fabric, fabric.
With the, yeah, with the project, you know, that that is, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward project in. You know, there's times where we hire an engineer, design it, put it out to bid, see who's going to work on it. This could be a project if the board's comfortable with the idea of just doing a, um, a design build where you, instead of courting an engineer. You find the construction company capable of doing design. And you work with them directly.
Right.
Generally, your change orders are less, um, it's not the right solution for every project, some things you do have to pre-engineer. Um, but I think a project like this would be a good opportunity if you wanted to try that, um. There is a company out there that is doing the work, uh, is capable of doing all what we need done. Um, and so I think the timing of it is such that like we could piggyback on that effort with the district. Maybe get a lower cost because there's already someone there with the equipment that they'd have to be doing anyways.
Yeah.
Scott, is that who it is?
A Pratt and Son, I believe. Um, they did the work in Newcastle, the drainage work in Newcastle.
Yep, Mills Road.
I think under Main Street, didn't they take a comfort under Main Street?
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, it'd be worth, uh, trying to work that out, yeah, and work with, work with Scott and see if we can make something happen, yeah.
So I think mostly just kind of looking to see where the board, what you feel about those. Ideas and is that something you think that you'd be comfortable pursuing as people will probably most certainly come out and.
Well, I'm.
Ask you.
We're gonna hear about it either way.
Right.
So why not do it? You know. Try to find, find a way to do it now. It kind of messes up with some of our other projects, but. If they're working on it now and.
How do you notify the people, the people living on there? Do it and the scheduling and all that, it's.
Scott's got a list now.
Actually, they, yeah, the residents aware of the water line work.
Okay. I I guess the only thing is the drainage eas- easements and how much, you know, resistance we're gonna get into on that, so.
That's, that's where I think it might have to. Kind of maybe span two fiscal years potentially, I mean, just working with everyone out there on that, um. It just.
Get through the winter and then.
I'll, I'll track down, um, some of the, if those bullet points that I'm suggesting make sense, I'll work on those before. Probably be not, if I can get it before the next meeting, I'll try, but.
If you can, yeah, yeah, alright. That's fine, I think we should, yeah, so we should proceed and. Put some more information on it, whatever, see if we can make it work, it'd be. It would be foolish not to, yeah. Okay.
I put Philbrook Fund on there, just, I'll just simply know, I don't have anything to present to you today, just, just letting you know, it's something I'm looking to. Cheryl, I had a meeting with Mid, Mid Coast, um, Community Action who administers that for us. And it's been a while, it appears to me through our documents that the boards reviewed the policy or just changed the policy, I think it was two thousand and one when it was brought last. Um, we've had a contract with them. I think twenty one was the last time it was signed, um, still working the same agreement, um, but we've stopped sending them the money. Um, we're keeping it in our account rather than sending it to them because they have a balance of fifty three thousand, um. You know, to be able to give to people from Damerskada that reach out, so, um, you know, until. That is used at a higher level or or goes down, I figured we might as well learn the interest on it. Um, and so it was a good conversation, but there's more that Cheryl, I need to put together for you to. The things that we've seen and just, you know, ways to improve it, look at the policy in place and see if that's. Those needs identified in two thousand and one are still the relevant priority needs now, um.
Who's the main source of? Interest, is it the navigator? Function over at the Y that.
Um, they'll point people there, um, folks that come from general assistance will will point them there if we can't help them, um, with that program. Um, some people reach out to Mid Coast Community Action directly as they are the lie heap, um, cap agency for the area. Um, and just through those conversations, people call them, they say, well, but we can help you with this, you know, we have, we do have some funds that we can help you with because you're a resident in Damerskada. Um, and so that's. Generally how people get there.
Randy. Uh, anybody have any questions, have we all seen the the manager's report, any? Thing we've all gone through, any questions or comments or any?
We just talked about.
I think the only thing I'll just note, um, I did get an email update today from Crocker, um, about the project, um. Regarding paving, um. They're still finishing out grading this week, um. Right now, as of this afternoon, their plan is to pave the east end on Monday, the eleventh.
Okay.
Um, install the sewer structure by the boat launch on Tuesday, and then finish paving. By Wednesday or Thursday next week. So that's changed a couple of times in the. Five days, but that's where they are as of this afternoon is what they're thinking, um. So they'll still finish, do the finish grade, you know, and get that set this week and go through the weekend that way and. Go from there, I'm trying to get them to get the striping to happen as soon as they can after they finish paving, just because.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, we'll need that. Um, without the construction equipment in there, it's just gonna, you know, look like everyone should get a hundred and sixty cars back there again, and we need, we need something there, so.
Be a demolition derby back there with, uh, with those stripes, so, okay, great, great.
Um, we do have fifty of those curb stop pieces, so we could run those in theory down. The double row all the way from one end to the other and probably. Get by with those fifty, um, you know, so a combination of that, cones and crooker thinks they might, if they can't get them there right away, just use those delineators they put on. The road project when you do temporary marks, um, so we'll get something out there for that, but, um. It, you know, it might be a few, couple of extra days to get the paint down, and they'll need. They're gonna do the parking lot paving in kind of two lifts, and then when they do the striping, they're gonna need full access to that, and because of the time of year, it's not likely it's gonna be able to be done at night.
Right, yeah. So.
So.
No, that's good, make it happen, so.
Any other questions from my report?
No, moving, can I have some more updates on that, so I don't have anything, um. Andy, do you have the, uh, cemetery? These stuff there? If you can copy out one of these, the sign.
It didn't print out.
Okay, I can send them out of mine here, then it's fine.
You can pull them out of there.
Have a copy of the.
Starts on twenty four.
Yep. Um, is there any, uh, discussion items or order we want to move along?
No, I guess, I I just, one thing is is on back Meadow and Hammond Street where they're doing the water line and. You know, in regards to the plow contractor coming through, you know, should we get a storm? Um, are the lips gonna be? Meet our standards for a plow contractor and who is responsible should, um. Anything happened, any damage. To the contract, his equipment. If they do end up paving, if you could just kind of touch base and make sure. Meets our standards.
Yeah, the, our standards, we don't have.
Correct.
I talked to you about, you know, some something that we should look at, the road opening permit for what are the standards, um, they, I did ask Scott, they do have. They do have paving standards in their contract, um, and they do have, um, a project rep. That's onsite, I think every day they're up there working, um, and so I think at least with that, they should have the ability to. You know, verify that they've met the the standard, um, that was in the, in the contract at least, so, um, I will ask about. Cause they're gonna work as as long as they can into the winter, um, if you're not a dis- rate payer, you might not be getting the emails, and there have been a couple that have gone out. And. But I think they're they're readying to start paving what they've already opened up. I think next week potentially.
Okay, yeah.
Um. But they've, they've been able to test water, they're supposed to be doing service lines to the houses, and I think this week was the plan. I'll ask about the, the concern about the road condition. That defect on us, on the contractor, on G S B sanitary, I mean, just.
Right, and you know, and if they're gonna pave it or or whatnot, I I hope they're gonna. Have it prepped and paved within the day, they're not gonna leave it for a week or two, a week or something.
Done, right.
They're gonna grab it out and get it ready, I hope they're gonna do it the next day.
Right.
So, yep.
Just wanna put a plug in for the Rotary that handled the parking for the trunk or treat with the eight hundred people coming and. Parents, nobody got killed, so.
Is that where you set the bar on this stuff now, is nobody gets?
We have the ambulances there, just.
Yeah, so, no, that's great, I have nothing to add.
Oh, I just.
Just a little shout out to Becky and her. Crew on the, actually, yesterday, there's a lot of voters, I worked the ballot box from forty eight. First couple hours, it was very stunning.
Yeah.
And I guess overall it was over fifteen hundred voters yesterday.
I think we had six hundred.
That's gotta be some kind of record.
Percentage of the town.
I think I'm worth some twenty two hundred, that's.
I think if, when Ob- Obama ran the first, first time, I think it was, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah, I asked Becky, and we don't, this morning, she didn't have the number of voters that had. Cast a ballot, they have a number of ballots cast, but they got to go and kind of manually count the number, go through that list. And they'd gone through and done the. Have a starting point of the ones that were pre-processed for the absentee, the mail-ins, and she at least. Could cross those names out prior to, and so it's a matter of counting them, but we'll probably get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe this will be the next turnout, good turnout.
Yep.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, those are favor, okay, hands up, boom four.